All right, welcome everybody. We are good to see everyone here tonight. We have a couple of meetings tonight. The first one is the LPA and I call that meeting to order if we can please call the roll.
Chair Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Chair Hartman?
Go ahead.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Thank you.
Here.
Board Member Al Britton?
Here.
Board Member Hartman?
Here.
And Board Member Kaczynski?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. If you can please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's okay.
Everybody did it.
Item number three of the LPA, if you could please read that into the record.
Yes, sir. A resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Local planning agency making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, the ULDC, to exclude certain power line transmission easements from net plot area and provide for nonconformities providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you, Deborah. Before we get into this item for a motion or a second, I would like to express that for this item and the one that follows this item, I'm not, I just want to say upfront, I don't, I'm not comfortable with it the way it is right now and I'll explain why that is. This affects a large number of properties. I know it actually affects yours and I appreciate the fact that you're moving this forward. But it affects a large number of properties in our town, basically taking away significant property rights from those individuals. And as I look around the audience here tonight and I suspect on YouTube, I'm not sure those folks are aware of what we're doing here. And it affects a lot of folks and I'm just not comfortable with it, I'll be honest with you. I think that we need to go out, we need to notify those folks that, what we're doing and allow them the opportunity to speak on this item before we take action on it. And I certainly agree with this item from the standpoint of preserving our rural lifestyle, but in this case, this particular item costs me nothing to preserve our rural lifestyle. But there are residents in our town, that's going to cost them a lot to preserve it. And they have the right to know about this, be sure that they know about this and we should hear what their concerns are, I believe, before we vote on it. So I want to throw that out to see, if I was forced to vote on it right now, I would have to decline.
Yeah. You know, I've learned to trust my gut and I'm glad you've brought it up because you just made my next statement.
Okay.
You know, what we're, when Jeff and I spoke, he mentioned he had a crib sheet. I was going to ask for full disclosure tonight if you could give us the crib sheet because it's no different than we had the issues with the fire fee a couple of years ago because the right people weren't involved, a number of people were impacted.
Exactly.
I see the same thing going down here and I don't want that.
Right.
And I'm glad we agreed to try to do what we can to remediate that issue.
Good, good, good.
Totally supportive.
Perfect. Other comments from the council?
I concur.
Okay.
I concur, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
Sorry, didn't get my speaker back on. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think that everybody should be involved with it and we can come to a conclusion and once we get the input from the residents and everyone, yeah, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Just one other quick comment.
Yeah.
Doing them in rapid fire like this all in one night, I think might be a little onerous too. I know we've all been to the comp plan board meetings and heard their discussion, but we don't generally participate in those discussions.
Exactly.
And I wouldn't, you know, because they voted 8-0 on something which while I completely respect it and thank them for the work they do.
Yeah.
We need to have some discussions on these and not all trying to jam it in so we get done by 11 o'clock.
Yeah, and you know, and I do try and steer clear. I figure the, any of the boards, not just the comp board, but any of the boards, that's their opportunity to, you know, kind of hash things out and discuss it. I try not to jump in the middle of it and try and sway it one way or the other, otherwise why are we sending it to those boards? You know, I want to hear what those folks have to say. I was a little uncomfortable with it when they were speaking about it. Between when they spoke about it and tonight, I've just grown more and more uncomfortable with it, so.
All right, well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not taking a position at this point. I'm just going to say, okay, what's our next step then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So.
It's clearly not a consensus and it has to have a consensus to move forward.
It does.
So where do we go from here with this? Do we send this back to the comp board? Do we table it? Do we throw it in the trash can or, I mean?
So here's, here's my, it's a group decision what we do, so I'm not saying this is the next step, but my preference on it is I believe there are two paths forward for us. Pathway one is if we want to proceed with this, I believe we need to do a mailing notification to each one of those residents and let them know that this is going to be up for discussion and to come out and give us their thoughts on it. If we believe that this is the one we want to proceed with. If we, you know, having thought about it over this time, if we no longer believe this is really the right thing to do, then I would say let's just get rid of it. So I'm open to either one of those pathways.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, excuse me, Bob. Mr. Mayor, can we have a workshop amongst the council members to discuss this? I know the sunshine law requires, but is there a way that we could set up some type of a workshop to discuss it amongst each other? And I think if we did that, we could work this out, I mean, through a workshop.
Well, I mean, we could. I mean, I think we're, we could talk about it right now. I don't know if we need to, unless, I mean, we've, we've all looked at it, we've had time to think about it and discuss it, so. But, but my big thing is not that we work it out. My big thing is that the residents, that this has impacted, have the opportunity to know what's going on and that they have the opportunity to give us their feedback on it. That's, I, you know, it's not necessarily complex what we're talking about here. It's a matter of, it's a matter of weighing, preserving our rural lifestyle against protecting individuals' property rights. They're both super high on my priority list and I think on all of our priority lists. And, but in this particular case, we're choosing one or the other. And I'm a little uneasy not having heard from the residents. I heard from one resident and I suspect that's only because one of those residents actually knows what's going on tonight. So, so I'm uneasy voting on it with that minute amount of feedback from the residents. So I don't necessarily think that it needs a workshop that we need to work out the details on because I think it's pretty straightforward.
Would we be able to bring the public into the workshop? I mean, can, can they attend a workshop? I mean, I'm not sure how that works.
Well, normally, normally a workshop is more among ourselves. I think what we're talking about here, if we were to pursue it, I think what we would do is we would postpone this to a later date and do a mailing to those residents between now and then, making them aware of what's happening and that we're, that their input is requested on this particular night when we would vote on it. Yeah.
I like the idea of a workshop because then we can at least discuss it amongst ourselves before we're discussing it with the public. I like then, after that. I mean, they can join us both times.
Yeah, I don't know, I think that's, I mean, we're talking about it now. We can do it, I just don't know what we would accomplish in a workshop.
We've got a lot to talk about with these items.
Well, we may have.
Oh, with all the items.
We have, we have more than one item to talk about.
Right, yeah.
A workshop may be a viable.
Okay.
Let's, why don't, why don't we wait till we see we get to the end and then, you know, if we have three or four items that we need to talk about. I mean, there's like five or six of them.
Yeah, there are.
You know, I'm fairly comfortable with what they put in front of us. I just believe, we've all talked about transparency a hundred times.
Right.
If we've talked about it once. To me, this is putting it in front of the residents so it's fully transparent and they understand what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And either disagree or agree and we can modify what it is that's in writing right now.
Absolutely.
Good.
So Keith.
Yeah, it's hard to figure out where the consensus is. You, we'd either do a motion to table this maybe till February and ask your assistant's town administrator to send out notice in January and tell everyone it will be on the February agenda, or you can kill it and we can re-advertise it.
Let's, let's, I mean, I can't make the motion, but my, my thought is that the first of those two, let's move it, let's table it till maybe the second meeting in February and that gives us time to get the word out. If between now and then we want to kill it, we can always kill it in February.
So, so do we have to make motions?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, don't.
Okay.
Not.
I'm good. March is, March is even better. Yep.
Yeah.
Until March and then.
So we've got a number of ordinances here that we were going to pass both in the LPA, deblate in the LPA and in the meeting. Do we have to make a motion for each one of those?
I think we should.
Okay.
Because I think some of them we can, we may be able to pass. I know for me, I'm more comfortable with some of them than I am with others.
So let's go through them then.
Yeah.
Okay, so on this one, we would need a motion to table this item until the March, what agenda, Russell?
The second meeting would be the 24th.
So the March 24th agenda and giving direction to the town staff to notify all impacted property owners, which would be property owners that have high transmission lines on their property, just to confirm correct?
Correct.
Of that, of the ordinance and of the meeting that it will be discussed.
Is it just the transmission lines or is it really each one of the items?
We'll, we'll talk about one of them at a time.
Okay, okay.
That's fine. This is just the first one.
Yep. Good.
On the, the other items impact, and I've read them, they impact everyone in the town. So on that one, you wouldn't send notice to everyone in the town.
Right, yeah, some of them I'm all right.
You'd put it in the newsletter or, you know, or the regular newspaper. So this was, is, the way I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's a targeted mailing to those who potentially could be directly impacted.
That's the way I see it.
And who, who made that motion?
I don't think it's been made yet.
There's no motion.
Okay.
Second.
I think he said no motion.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion that we run this to a date certain, March 24th.
I second.
Meanwhile, we direct the town staff for a mailing, and this is for a workshop, am I correct?
No, this is for.
On the agenda.
No, this, this is just for the item to come up again.
Okay.
Because then that, if, if it's a workshop, technically it's just with us. I want to hear from the residents, so we need to have it on regular.
Okay, so we'll make it for a regular meeting. That's my motion.
Thank you.
I second.
Did you say a date, Gary?
24th of March.
Okay.
Second meeting.
Good.
Deborah, if you can please call the roll on that.
Yes. Board Member Al Britton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Next item, Mayor, is resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to exclude certain surface water management areas from net plot area and provide for nonconformities providing for an effective date.
Thank you. This one here, these are the two, the rest, the rest I, you know, I think I can vote on, but this one here falls to me in the same category as the one we just talked about. I would prefer to break it out to a later date and notify those residents as well.
Yeah, should we, I understand there's some, some verbiage that I was talking to Jeff about. Should we be sending this back to the comp board? Jeff, what's your?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor. He's referring to the nonconforming language that I wanted to clarify. It just needs a very simple clarification and it's something that in the interim, while this is in limbo at council, I'll run that language through the comp plan board just to follow the same procedure we have with all of these.
Perfect.
Now, Mayor, the difference from this ordinance and the prior one is this could affect any single resident in the town of Southwest Ranches. So maybe the direction on this is to ensure that it's in the town newsletter, a copy of the actual ordinance in the day that you wish to consider.
Well, I guess, I guess when I look at it, I mean, it could, but there are a limited number of properties that can be split that have this water situation on them today.
Pretty much every property that can be split would be affected by this. It's, it's to some degree.
Okay.
I'd be more comfortable moving this back to the comp board and let them, and Jeff work with them.
Let's do that.
Okay. All right, do you know, do we need a motion?
Yeah, so on this one, since you have no idea when it's coming back, just do a motion to table it.
All right, just a motion to table this, send it back to the comp board.
Deborah.
Board Member Al Britton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to modify standards for certain ingress egress easements by narrowing the easements required to serve up to four landlocked plots of land providing for an effective date.
And, and Mayor, Keith was 100% right on this. He, he asked me about this one, if, if it was doing what we thought it was doing. And the provision that was, that I was focusing on was in the actual ordinance itself and I didn't see the issue, but the title does need to be tweaked on this, so we need to re-advertise this so that the title accurately reflects what the ordinance is doing, which isn't narrowing, it's widening.
Oh, okay.
It's just exactly the opposite, so we need to re-advertise.
Right, right, okay. Okay, thank you, Keith.
So.
So we need to table this to the January meeting?
No, we're going to re-advertise this one.
It's being pulled by staff with your consent.
So do we kill it or do we table it?
Number five is being pulled? Share driveway?
Yeah, number five. Since it has to be re-advertized, there's really no point in tabling it. We might as well just withdraw it from the agenda.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, breeze and write through these.
Not what I expected tonight.
I didn't expect Jeff to ever tell me I was right, so.
Do we need a motion?
No, it's been withdrawn by staff. A resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to amend the meaning of the term flagged plot to revise the standards for flagged plots and provide for nonconformities providing for an effective date.
Do we like this one or no?
I, I can, I can move forward with this one.
Okay, that's two so far.
Likewise.
We have a motion to.
I make a motion to, what am I making, a motion, sorry.
Recommend approval.
Recommendation.
Thank you.
I second the recommendation to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right, is there any discussion on this item?
Could we ask, Jeff, Jeff, you want to give a little clarity on this here?
Yeah.
Sure, we have a slide on this one.
Thank you.
If Deborah could pull that up, please. Can you go to the next slide, please, Deborah? Okay, I'm going to talk about the driveways even though we're not considering it tonight because this, this ordinance for the flagged plots is sort of related to the driveways. So the, the ordinance to change shared driveway standards was recommending widening the driveway requirements, not the pavement, but the ingress egress easements for any ingress egress easement, whether it serves one lot or up to four. When the four lots, the two to four lots are what we call share driveways. Right now, there's a 15-foot minimum for a single fan, for one lot being served by an ingress egress easement and there is a 25-foot minimum for two to four lots. Those are minimums and the code does provide that, it acknowledges it's not always going to be enough room for utilities and other types of things or perhaps even some access and drainage considerations. And so the town engineers empowered to require wider easements than that. So that ordinance just puts those wider easements into effect. Corresponding to that, flagged plots are, they're similar to the situation where you have a single, a single lot being served by an ingress egress easement. The difference is rather than having an easement running through one lot extending to one behind it, you have a little flag staff extending to the street. And there are a few issues with those. One of them is that the, if we're going to consider widening the ingress egress requirement for an easement that serves a single lot, we ought to do the same thing for flagged plots. And so this ordinance would require a minimum 25-foot width at the street line and all the way through that, that staff leading back to the buildable part of the lot, that would be 25 feet. What it also does is it puts it on parity in terms of the way we treat them with lots in the RE district. In the RE district, we require a certain amount of buildable area exclusive of that staff. And we don't do that, the code doesn't do that currently for the two acre districts. And this would accomplish that for the two acre districts. And then finally, it provides that any flagged plot existing as of the date of adoption of the ordinance is grandfathered and this does not apply to those. And this graphic is just an example of, I won't even say it's an extreme example, there are some lots out there that are pretty funky and you can see that there's four normal lots, if you will, and let's just say that there's a street intersection at the lower right corner and those lots are all, you know, buildable, usable because they're a normal configuration. But with these flagged plots, sometimes a lot, sometimes it's not about a quality lot, it's about just carving out that extra lot so that you can sell a home. And they use those flag staffs to meet the minimum lot size requirements. And sometimes, and this is sort of an extreme example where you might have access on a two streets and two flag staffs, you're not left with a lot of buildable area that's usable and yet that lot's the same size as all the other ones, but it's clearly just not as usable. So this is intended to, to, to result in flagged lots if we're going to keep allowing them, that are more, they're guaranteed to be usable. And flagged plots, they are a rural characteristic. They're things that most suburban areas and all urban, most urban areas don't allow. So keeping them isn't, isn't inconsistent with a rural lifestyle, but making sure that we're not creating shortcuts and, you know, allowing bad lots to be created, you know, is important to preserve the rural lifestyle. So that's the genesis of this particular ordinance.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I think just from a general standpoint, like what you were showing up there, it's, it's hard to picture how that you would have space for animals and really the open space we're talking about there. And I think that's the problem with those types of lots. I do have a kind of a technical, I don't know if it's technical, but I do have a question about the wording there. The, the ordinance refers to a front yard. What, what under, what technically is a front yard in the ordinance?
A front yard for a flagged plot, and this is another thing that we did years ago when drafting the code to make sure that the flagged plots were mostly usable. And that is, we clarified that the front yard, which is the minimum setback for the house, is, if we go back to the drawing, that slide, the lower, once you get into the buildable portion of the lot, the lower horizontal line there is where the front yard would be measured from.
That line up there?
Yes, so 50 feet to, in the upward direction from that would be the, the front setback line and.
So 50 feet above that.
Right, everything forward of that is considered the front yard. And front yards, you know, not a whole lot can be put in a front yard.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions before I open it up to the public?
Jeff, you, Mayor showed the line, could it be the other line also? Could, could it be the top line also if the house wanted to face that way?
No, it would, it would be the line that the mayor pointed to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he could put his house either way, he could put the back of the house.
Doesn't matter how the house is oriented.
Okay.
But, but for the purpose of determining this, the setbacks, that's what it is.
I guess, Deborah, can you put that up one more time?
I guess the question would be if they chose to have the driveway on that side, if this is the intersection, then this would become the front yard or not?
In that case, it, I've honestly, I, it's my fault for putting up something that looks like this, but, but I've probably not seen one where it matters. In this case, we would probably choose one.
Okay.
Since there's two driveways.
Yeah.
Since that lot reflects two driveways, we'd pick one. And the reason we would do that is because we don't, on corner lots and other lots with, with two access points, we treat one as a front and one as a side, so we would probably do the same thing.
Perfect. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick question about the comment you just made, Jeff, about a corner lot not having two egress points?
My comment was that a corner lot doesn't have two front yard requirements, it just has one. We choose one.
That makes sense. Good. Thank you.
Very good. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Any further discussion on this item?
Jeff, if you wouldn't mind, spend a minute on what the benefits of this are.
Sure.
Because I think, you know, we really haven't gone into much detail on the, on the benefits.
Sure. I'll just go provision by provision. First of all, there's a, we cleaned up the definition a little bit, which is to say, we just put in some qualifiers because the definition reflects a textbook flagged plot, which the one I showed you wasn't, you know, I pulled a real wild one out there. And it's, it's just qualified a little bit to use words like, you know, often, typically. We have an illustration and, you know, we, we just emphasize that all flagged plots don't look like this.
Right.
There are a whole variety, they come in all sorts of shapes and sizes that are not all textbook. So that's one thing. The next thing we do is we match the treatment of flagged lots that we do for one acre districts with the two acre districts. In the one acre districts, we require that at least 35,000 square feet of net lot area, net acreage, exists exclusive of that front yard. That's why it's important the way we measure that front yard. So we require that you still have 35,000 square feet, you know, rearward of that front lot line, or excuse me, front setback line. We don't have a similar requirement in the two acre districts. And so the two acre districts are intended that you have some, you know, 80,000, 87,000 square feet of lot area. And if a lot of that is going to be tied up in the driveway or, you know, forward of the front yard, let's say, because, I mean, I could, so many examples, but you have a lot of these untraditional or non-traditional flagged lots that don't necessarily have that long stick of a driveway, but they, they widen gradually and all that counts towards the lot area. So they'll meet their two acre lot requirement, but it's not usable, or most of it, or a lot of it's not usable. So what this does is it takes the same requirement that we apply to the one acre districts and applies it to the two acre districts, but double. So it's 70,000 square feet behind the rearward of that front lot line, that's front setback line. So that's exactly why we're doing this. And then the other part is, is the 25-foot minimum width requirement, whereas now that little skinny driveway can be 15 feet wide, it would have to be 25 feet wide and that would be consistent with the shared, with the ingress egress and shared driveway ordinance, which we're not considering tonight.
And, and once again, those, if somebody had that 15-foot today, it would still be, it would be nonconforming, but it would still be legal.
Correct, correct. And with all these ordinances, the intent is, is that existing lots of record are grandfathered. This only applies prospectively when folks are creating new lots and new easements and that type of thing. that type of thing.
Perfect. What do you, Jeff, you, you just threw a word out at the end, new easements.
Mm-hmm.
Why would somebody create a new easement on their property and we not take it, or the Water Management District, or FPNL?
This is going back to the, the other ordinance, which we're not considering, just because it's part of the discussion, you know, it's related to this. An ingress egress easement. If someone was creating a new ingress egress easement instead of a flag plot, you know, to serve, to serve access to a lot, it only creates when somebody's creating a new, it only affects someone creating a new one. This only affects someone creating a new flag lot that, that doesn't already exist.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks for the overview as well.
Sure.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? All right, Deborah, if you can please call the roll.
Board Member Al Britton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jodlansky?
Yes.
Chair Bridecrus.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item seven, a resolution of the town, of the local planning agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to expand the town council's authority to grant variances providing for an effective date. And I said before I get killed for even reading this one, maybe we should turn it over to Jeff to explain.
Good, let's do it. Okay. This is what I would call a preemptive provision. It's a feature of, of good, modern land development codes that anytime that a petitioner alleges that, that there's a town rule or ordinance, a code provision, that's somehow violating unintentionally some federal or state law, that there's a process essentially that they can get administrative relief before they go to the court system. And Keith can expand on this, but there are some limitations to what the town can grant variances for, in terms of just the types of code provisions, but also the hardship standards wouldn't necessarily apply. You know, the strict hardship and reasonable use standards might not always apply. And so this just broadens the council's ability to grant a variance in a case where the petitioner demonstrates, you know, convincingly that there really is a potential violation, and then the council and the town attorney are of that view and wish to grant relief.
Motion approved?
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion on this item? Any public discussion on this item? Seeing none. Deborah, if you can please call the roll.
Board Member Al Britton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jodlansky?
Yes.
Chair Bridecrus.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item eight, mayor, is a resolution of the local planning agency of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to establish eligibility requirements for waiver of plat applications and to make changes of a housekeeping nature, providing for an effective date.
Jeff, maybe you can just give us a quick rundown on why we're doing this one as well, because it's kind of more...
Yeah, this one is, and we do have some exhibits here, should be, Deborah, under, under item eight. Okay, is that the first one?
Yeah.
Before I explain what this is, what this, this ordinance is a follow-up, it's an implementation of the council zoning in progress. It was enacted to put a hold on any new applications for waivers of plat while the council, while the staff worked with the comp plan board and the council deliberated on putting potential limitations on eligibility to apply for a waiver of plat. Currently, anybody who isn't required to plat by, by town ordinance can apply for a waiver of plat, as long as they have the acreage to split the property into two, they can apply. What this ordinance does is it attempts to create some eligibility requirements so that not every lot split can, can necessarily be approved through a waiver of plat. And waivers of plat are only, they don't allow more than a single split. So if you're creating more than two lots by splitting one parcel, then you have to plat anyway. What this does is it creates some new provisions for eligibility, and of course, one is that you don't otherwise have to plat by town ordinance. Number two, it allows waivers of plat if you're just adjusting a lot line but not creating a new lot. So as long as you're not moving the line more than 50 feet, then, then a waiver of plat is, is allowable. And there, there are instances where that's happened already in the past, and the council's approved that, and I've seen other situations where people have adjacent budding lots, and some of them are larger than they have to be, and one of them might be smaller than it's supposed to be, and they, if they move that within 50, the 50-foot limitation, that could be approvable by waiver of plat. And then finally, you would need to have a lot area equal to at least three times the minimum area of that district, and that's what these illustrations show. So the illustration you see here, this is, this would be one lot of two acres in the rural estate district, which requires one acre. And in this case, because you don't have at least three times the minimum acreage requirement in that district, which would be three acres, you'd have to plat it if you want to split it. Next, please. In this situation, a waiver of plat would be authorized because you have the three acres. That's three times the minimum lot size requirement for that district. Doesn't matter how you want to split it, as long as both lots are compliant, you know, with the minimum district regulations. It could be two lots of one and a half acres, one lot of one acre and another of two, whichever. But the idea is that you'd have to have that extra acreage in the first place in order to split the lot. And along with this, and part of the rationale is that, and there's, that's why there's an asterisk, asterisk after the waiver of plat is allowed, which is that the property owner has to be willing to deed restrict the property against any further subdivision. Because remember, that property's large enough, like in the one on the right, the lot to the right is two acres and could be split again if it weren't for the deed restriction that this requires. So, next, please. This is the same example in the Rural Ranches District. If you have four acres, which is currently enough to split a lot in two, through a waiver of plat, you would not be able to do it because you don't have enough acreage, you'd have to plat it. Next one, please. If you had the six acres, the same scenario was with the one-acre lots, just more acreage. You could, you can split it through a waiver of plat if no further subdivision is allowed via, you know, permanent restriction on the property. I think that was the last slide on that. And that's what this ordinance does.
One, one thing, Mayor, just to add, nothing in this ordinance prohibits a property owner from plating. So this is just the easier process, the waiver of plat.
Yeah.
There is no property right being affected because everyone can always plat. It doesn't stop that from occurring.
Right. And the town, if it wanted to, could require every single lot subdivision to go through plating. That's completely within the town's authority if it wanted to do that. This still carves out situations when a waiver of plat would be permitted.
Yeah, this is the result of, you know, the, the, what was it, August?
Yeah.
Meeting that we, that predicated the whole conversation and bringing it forward. And I've been working with Jeff and Keith on this for, you know, since then, to try to carve out, and we came up with a, actually Keith came up with a fourth case scenario that we hadn't considered, and that was the, showing the six acres where it was divided three and three in the, in the other.
Right.
Which wasn't considered at that time, but that, if you deed restrict it, we should probably make it allowable on something like that. So a lot, a lot of work has gone into this to get to this point, you know, where we're trying to, trying to keep this rural and less density.
Right.
For lack of a better way of saying it. So, so I don't know how everybody feels about the scenarios that we've got going on here. So I guess, I, I'm comfortable with all of this. I'd love to hear from you guys.
I just have a couple of questions. If the subject property, I know that earlier on, the discussions were that we want to help the families, maybe giving property to children, something like that. Would this avenue of waiver of plat be available to a property that's owned by a corporation? And would, would that be helping families?
We can't discriminate back and forth from our conversation, Jeff. We've got to make this available to all takers.
Yeah, the, the answer is that, it, it doesn't differentiate between a private individual and a corporation, but the idea that you have to have three times the minimum acreage, but you can't get three lots out of it, pretty much weeds out a corporation that's looking to, you know, the development, the speculators and the developers, because it just wouldn't make sense. You'd plat it, you'd get your three lots and you'd plat it. That's really...
That's, that was my concern.
Yeah.
Speculators.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, David, I also, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, not only would they not be wanting, but they wouldn't want to deed it so that they couldn't develop it later. I don't think a corporation would ever want to do that.
Absolutely.
Right? Now, an individual family may decide to, but...
Right.
I, I don't think a corporation would ever want to do that.
And, and also, keep in mind that, I mean, we even, we've already had an instance where we had a property owned by an LLC, but it was a holding company for an individual and her son, who were going, she was, who, to build homes for each of them on the property. So the form of ownership doesn't really, is not really indicative of what's happening, but the minimum acreage requirement gets at the, the essence of that issue by, by driving a developer to plat. And they just, they just wouldn't benefit from this, it wouldn't be worth it.
I think my, I like where this is going. I'm still, I want to have a little bit more discussion on it. I like where it's going. My, my hesitation with it has to do with two things. Well, first, let me say, when, as far as moving the property line over within that 50 feet, I'm totally good with that, I have no issue with that. The other, the other piece of it, with the three times the minimum lot size, my concern with that is, number one, there may be in rural ranches, some four-acre lots, or really more likely a five-acre lot, that wants to be split in half for a family, and this would preclude that from happening. Well, no, it would not preclude it from happening, it would preclude them from using the waiver of plat.
Exactly.
They could still go the long way the other way. But, I don't know. I thought that was the point, was we were trying to help those families out. So I'm concerned from that, from that standpoint. The same thing with a, with a two-acre lot in rural estates, but that's probably a little less likely. When, when I thought about this, but, but I get where it's going, you know, I get where it's going, and I'm not, I'm still trying to, you know, kind of weigh one for the other. But to me, that's, that's, that's a, that's an unintended consequence to it that I don't, I don't like, to be honest with you.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, you know, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of five-acre lots...
There's a lot.
In, in Sunshine Ranches and even in Rolling Oaks, that are now going to be, going to have to go the long way around to do that.
Expensive way around.
Yeah. So that's a little bit of a nega, I mean, when I, when I think about it, I, I want to get to that essence of protecting the folks that have been here a long time and smoothing the way for them to pass on their property to their kids. They understand the rural lifestyle, they're the ones that are going to perpetuate it for the next generation, and, and if we can make it easier for them, I think that's, that's really where it wanted to go. And so to me, the most direct route to doing that is to say that this can only be done, like, you have to own the property for 20 or 25 years, and you can't sell it for five years after you do it.
Can you do that? Put the five, the 25-year limitation on property ownership?
Yes.
Ah, you know, so, so now you're talking about folks that, that have, are invested in our town and understand our town, and, and basically, once in their lifetime, they get to do this, which to me is going to be, in most cases, I mean, can, is there a situation where it might be used incorrectly? Sure. But I think in the vast majority of the cases, this will really hone it down to the, so that people, the way we want it to be used, we want those folks to have the easiest pathway forward to pass on their property to their kids. And I think, I think that's the most direct route to go there.
Yeah, I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I don't disagree with it, because really what we're trying to do is shut down the developers...
Exactly.
...that are purchasing, knocking down a house, splitting, you know, it's a profit center.
Exactly.
You know, and, and you want a reward, not reward, wrong word, but...
Yeah.
You want to benefit...
Yes.
The, the, the long-term generational ownership of the properties and stuff like that. Because as you know, everybody, I mean, I'm watching in Rolling Oaks, I'm watching houses being flipped so fast, I can't...
Yeah.
It, it, it's just mind-boggling.
Right.
There, there's one I've seen that's gone now through, in less than 18 months, three owners.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't want to mention where or anything like that, but, you know, but I mean, and every time, there was about a couple hundred thousand dollar flip on it. So it's, it's a definite profit center, so, you know, opportunities are there for the speculators.
Yeah.
Big time. And that, this would shut a lot of that down.
Yeah.
How about as a compromise, or is it need-to-meet-a-position, I trade you a 20- or 25-year time constraint for the triple, the lot, triple the acreage size that we were talking about? So you wouldn't need, you could do it with a five-acre lot, you don't have to have triple the minimum lot size. You'd have, you could do two and a half and split, let me think, you couldn't?
Yeah, you could.
You could.
Yeah.
You could split it in half.
You could.
Yeah, you don't have to have the triple.
Right.
But we put a time constraint on it, you have to have whatever the reasonable amount of time, it's 25 years, 10 years, I don't know, something in between. But I like that approach.
Well, the time constraint would, Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, or Jeff, the time constraint would, would take care of a lot of, a lot of this completely, you know, in my thinking right now. I think so.
All, all the mayor is bringing up is just another mechanism in which someone could use a waiver of plat.
Right.
So it's item four, you know, essentially. You said it was allowed if you deed restrict in, in the three times, you're saying you're allowed if you're just moving the property line, or it's, I guess it's the third. And now what he's essentially suggesting, and hearing good feedback on, is a restriction that says if you've owned your property continuously for 25 years and agreed to deed restrict it for five years thereafter, then you can do it as well, and the intent is clear that that's because longtime families should be able to split their properties for estate purposes. And, and if that's okay, they can be written exactly like that.
Are you comfortable with that, Steve?
I am.
Good.
So, so to make sure we're clear...
Keith, quick, quick question. Keith, you, you said deed restricted for five years. The original one was deed restricted forever.
That still applies. That, that is for, if someone owns their property for two years and wants to subdivide it with a, in any of the drawings that Jeff showed on the screen, that's still allowed. We're not prohibiting a owner from doing that in this current version of the ordinance. All the mayor is bringing up is just another category that someone could apply. So that one doesn't go away.
So are we saying that you can split five acres now and you don't have to have six acres to split it up into two and four?
If, if we were to go with what I proposed, then that would be true.
It would be an additional one.
And what, what would that replace out of what was already here?
Not replace it.
It would just add two?
It would add two. It would add to it. There's, there's, you know, they, they would have the option, if, if they owned it, if they owned it less than 25 years, and they wanted to, and they had three times the acreage, they could go that route. If they owned it for 25 years and they only had two times, they could go that route.
I think that's reasonable.
Or if they had five acres, they could split it in half?
Yeah.
All right. Now...
If they owned it for 25 years.
Right. But I, I'm asking, is 25 years too long? That's a long, long time.
It is a long time, and I, and I'm not sure...
I mean, that is a really long time, you know, for people to live in one area, and, you know, they've been here for 15, 18 years or so, they're getting older, they want to give it to their kids. I mean, I, I'm not sure that 25 is, that's a long time.
That, that's a good point, and I, I just, I just kind of picked that number out of the air, so it, it may be too long, I agree with you. I mean, I'm, I'm fine...
How about 20 years? How about 20 years?
20 is fine?
20?
What, yeah, because I mean, you're talking about long term and, you know, handing it down to kids. I can't believe I've been here for 30 years.
I know.
Like I moved in yesterday.
Exactly.
You know, but I do, I do have a question. I know, let's say, somebody applies for waiver of plat, they have, they've been, they meet the time requirement. Would the deed restriction be on both property, both?
Yes.
Okay, that, that answer, in, in your thinking.
That's my thinking, yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah.
On the entire original property.
I concur with that. With the five year on one and, and the 25 year on the, on the original one, they're splitting off.
Yes.
I think that will, that will really calm down the speculator, speculation that's going on.
Cool. Or they'll just go to the county and do a replat the property.
Yeah.
That was an option.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a profit center. That's all we're trying to do, is trying to, we're trying to use it for what it's intended for, and it's being abused. And I think we're moving in the right direction.
Protecting our neighbors and our lifestyle.
So Mayor, if the, if the resident doesn't agree to the deed restriction, or if he doesn't accept any of those provisions, he still can take off and go up to, we're just offering him a less expensive, more time, less time, you know, to do it
Yeah.
option, but he has to meet these requirements?
Exactly.
Okay.
Good.
A little more control on it.
If, if there could be a motion to accept the mayor's amendment, because you can't make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Awesome.
So if you could vote upon the amendment.
All right. Let me open that up to the public.
Well, Mayor, can we vote upon the amendment, and then, Jeff's the amendment, and then the public knows what their, what they're discussing.
Yep.
Board Member Albritton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz?
And just to clarify, this was with 20 years?
20 years.
Yes. Public comment.
Newell Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. I got a scenario that maybe figure this out. If they don't use the plat method, and it's a six acre piece of property, that's what you were talking about, and he's going to split two acres off, and you'll have four acres then. And so they're going to have the deed restriction that's placed on the deed that they can't split. 20 years later, the person that buys the property, the four acres, can they now split it?
No. No, there's a deed restriction on it for perpetuity.
Well, you just said that at, anyone, you said anyone who's been here 20 years can split their property. You just said it as part of your discussion.
New old deed restricted.
Once you go through, once you go through the waiver of plat, it's deed restricted from there on out.
In perpetuity.
Or imperperituity. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, that is now part of the discussion, that you have it in forever, because the way you were discussing it before, you added the 20-year addition, where the person, he does explicit the first time, and it's supposed to be deed restricted forever. But then you said after 20 years, that person can split it again. And that's what I got from what you said.
Okay.
So now you have clarified it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I got one more question.
Sure.
Once it's
Wait, hold on just a second. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, not even from George? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, once it's deed restricted, can they go to the county later on and get that deed restriction lifted through the county?
It's deed restricted in favor of the town.
Yes.
So the town council could always unanimously remove the deed restriction, but no one else can.
Okay. But the town council could?
Any, any indivi, yes. That's how they all work. If the town council unanimously lifted it 100 years from now, they can do so. The, the, one who the deed restrictions in favor of always has the option of releasing that deed restriction.
Okay.
I'm not clear now, because we talked about a 20-year, you know, lot ownership, and then they could split it. And we were saying five years, or did we not, are we not going with the five years?
Plus five.
Plus five.
Plus five. Right, right. So, you know, kind of to Newell's point, after that five years, they could then further split the property?
No. No, what they're, no, what they're saying is that they will not sell the property the next five. So, so it gets that profit motive.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that part, I'm, you know, restricting somebody from selling their property, can we do that by law?
Yes.
Okay, I'm learning a lot of things tonight.
It's because they're agreeing to it. They're actively
We're not imposing.
You're not requiring this.
Okay.
They're saying, we would like to waive
Right.
a year-long process, and we are willing to give up our property right in consideration of that waiver.
This is like a contract?
100%. You cannot force them to do this.
Right.
This has to be them coming to you and say, this is what we're offering you, you know, in exchange for not going through the county process.
Thank you. I clarify.
That's the difference.
Good.
So the, the ordinance, or excuse me, the LPA item on the table, is the original resolution presented with an amendment that will read something like this. It will come back to the council eventually on second reading, but it would be, you have your exceptions to when a waiver of plat is allowed. We're adding an additional exception that would say something to the extent of waiver of plat shall be allowed for any property owner, any property whose owner has continuously owned the property for 20 years, provided that they deed restricted property for no sale for five years thereafter. I'll clean it up, but it's just generally what it would be.
That sounds right to me.
Good.
All right. Any further discussion on this item?
I like it.
Yeah. Seeing none. Deborah, if you can please call the question?
Board Member Albritton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
No, I think we need to approve the minutes.
Oh, approve the minutes. Oh.
Missed that. Who's covering? Sorry about that.
Somebody second.
Sorry about that. I was too quick on the trigger.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I was getting nervous there for a second. I didn't expect this to be the controversial item. All right. Is there any discussion on the item? Is there any public comment on the item? Seeing none. Deborah, if you can please call.
Board Member Albritton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, now a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right. Do we need a break, or we're good?
Five minutes?
Five minute, five minute break, and then we'll start the regular council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, are we ready?
All right, let's call the regular meeting to order. Deborah, if you can please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Here.
Got a quorum?
Great, thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mayor, are you ready to go into quasi judicial?
We are, thank you.
The next two items on the agenda, three and four, quasi judicial in nature, which means that the applicant needs to prove by competent substantial evidence that they have met the criteria of the Towns Code in order to be approved. Because quasi judicial nature, items, you're serving as judges Because quasi judicial na- uh, items, you're serving as judges instead of just setting policy, all witnesses that come before the town council need to be sworn in, and the rules of quasi judicial procedure are in the, uh, agenda. At this point, Deborah, if you could please swear in, anyone who wishes to speak on either item three or four on tonight's agenda, if you could please stand if you're going to speak on item three or four and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
We're going to start with item three, and I'll read it into the record. A resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Franches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP 3121 to subdivide 4.39 gross acres of property into two lots of 2.03 and 2.26 net acres, generally located at the northeast quadrant of the southwest 54th Place intersection with southwest 208th Lane, legally described as track 64 less the west 25 feet in section 34 Township 50 South Range 39 East Everglades Land Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof, recorded in plat book two, page one of the public records of Miami-Dade County. Said lands lying and being in Broward County, Florida unless that portion of track 64 described in exhibit A here too, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to, uh, execute any and all documents necessary and proper to effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing free rec- recordation and providing for an effective date. It should say necessary and proper, or, but it's, it's okay. Uh, at this point, who is representing the applicant in this?
Keith, uh, staff requested a tabling for this because they hadn't met their mail notice requirements, and that's on the amended agenda.
Well, I'm looking at the initial agenda.
(laughing)
So when is this being tabled to?
Uh, we're asking for a tabling to, uh, this is January 27th, but, um, I'm going to have a conflict on the 27th, so, uh, please, February 10th.
Make a motion to table to date certain February 10th.
And, and Jane, are you representing the applicant?
Second.
Just, just for the record, Jane storms from Police Land Surveyors. Jane, is the applicant, uh, requesting that tabling as well? Okay, the confirmation is yes. So, uh, with the motion in a second, if we could just call roll then on the tabling.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll have to read that all again.
(laughing) I didn't want to interrupt you.
That's it.
Like you were on a roll. Fun at it.
I was trying.
I, I, item four, Mayor, is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Franches, Florida, correcting resolution number 2017-18 by clarifying the and affirming that the resolution vacated and abandoned easements for drainage, utilities, ingress and egress, lake and lake maintenance included in exhibit A to the resolution. Such easements located within the Tara Platt, as recorded in plat book 162, page 20 of the Broward County, of the, uh, Broward County, Florida, public records, further clarifying and affirming that resolution number 2017-18 accepted new easements for drainage, utilities, ingress and egress, lake maintenance, and fire department turnaround, uh, included in exhibit B to the resolution. Such easements located within the Tara Platt, generally located on the, on the west side of unimproved southwest 184th Avenue and south of Griffin Road, providing for maintenance of the easements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date. Jeff, I assume this one's going forward, right?
It's going forward.
All right, is the applicant present? If you could, uh, please come to the podium and state, uh, your name, um, where you work and that you've been sworn in, and that you represent the applicant.
Ronald Fritz from.
You can just pull that down. Sorry, Ronald, the mask blocks the, uh.
I know. Why do you take it?
You can take it down, yeah.
Ronald Fritz, and I represent Swepki Sheskin and Associates, and on behalf of Akai Estates.
And you've been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this point, I'm going to ask any member of the town council, has had any ex parte communication to announce it for the record? Uh, I have one that I just want to announce. Uh, we were reviewing this item today, and I was going over with the vice mayor. He had a question that I couldn't answer, so I had to quickly call the applicant. Uh, he answered the question immediately, so I just wanted to explain it for the record, and it was just a confirmation that the permanent, uh, entrance to the lot will be off Griffin Road because some of the notations were, uh, a little bit crazy from the old 184th. So the applicant, uh, confirmed that for us for the record. Aside from me, did anyone else have any ex parte communications concerning that?
I did not.
I did not.
I did not.
No, sir.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to turn over to Jeff for the staff report.
Thanks, Keith. Uh, in 2016, uh, the council approved a, uh, a site plan amendment for, uh, for Akai Estates, and, um, this had started out, the, this was the Tara Platt that goes way back, and it was Downey Equestrian Ranches at one point, and, and it, it, it just, um, it just sat, and nothing, it never, it never got any traction. And finally, uh, the current owner and developer, uh, took control, and one of the things that happened, given the, the age of the plat, uh, and the, and the dedications for, uh, the canal along 184th, among other things, is that, uh, some of the, some of the hydro- hydrological conditions changed, and, uh, some other considerations as well, and, uh, South Broward, uh, required widening of the canal. I'm not sure if they moved it or not, but, um, but the drainage easements had to change. There were basically a whole suite of changes driven by South Broward Drainage District, uh, to make this site plan work and comply with current conditions and current district requirements. And, um, uh, what happened was, uh, the applicant had to vacate all of the easements that were platted and re-grant new easements in the new alignments and widths and locations and all that stuff that South Broward wanted. Drainage easements and drainage district requirements drove almost all of this, um, but what happened is those realignments, those changes in dimensions also pushed utility easements into a different location, um, a lake easement and a lake maintenance easement. So the resolution was talking about drainage easements, um, because that really was the driving force, but there were 360 or something like that pages of sketches and legals, and, um, uh, there were several other easements, types of easements, that were being vacated and re-granted. All of those easements were part of that resolution, but the resolution didn't really call them out. So we're going back and, and just correcting the enabling part of the resolution to acknowledge all these other easements and reaffirming that they're vacated. Questions?
Does any member of the town council have any questions of Jeff? Does the applicant have any questions of Jeff?
No.
Do you have anything to add?
No. He's, he, uh, explained it very well.
Perfect. So at this time, uh, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to open up to the public and, uh. Right.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Perfect.
Is there any, um, any questions or discussion from the council before I open up to the public?
I'm none.
I, I, I have a, I have a couple. One is, I think, tagging on to the question you had earlier, I just want to be clear on the entrance into this. Back when it was originally approved in 2016, um, it looked like the entrance was coming off of, um, like 185th. Um, now it looks like it's coming off of what would be 184th.
Right.
Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and how, how is that going to work? How is it going to align with the light that is currently at Bonaventure and, and, and the entrance? I just want to make sure I understand that.
It meets all the distance requirements for the, and it's only right turns out, so won't be any conflict with traffic for left turns. It was moved from the, because it was causing more confusion having a parallel road.
Yeah.
Going wrong direction.
Yeah.
Griffin.
Right.
So between Broward County and, uh, the town, they decided that it goes straight through, right straight to Griffin.
So right now, can, can.
I, I just wanted to clarify that you're going to be seeing this as a site plan modification and, and possibly a delegation request, um, where we're in the process of figuring out if they've done the delegation request yet to create the new opening for this access, but you're going to see this. This has not been approved.
I know.
Part of this site.
I just, it was different than the last time I saw it. I just was trying to understand it.
The county approved the modification of the NVA line. So that now we're just doing the requirements, but it's been approved by the county commission for that entrance.
Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll discuss that in detail down the line.
Yeah, the site plan is coming up for approval.
Perfect, perfect, good.
This is just easements.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. It was just a difference and I had the opportunity to talk to those involved, so I thought I would bring it up. But I know it's a different item. Speaking of different items, this one is also a different item, but you're right here, so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up. I noticed that recently on the fence there, we have put a huge sign of kind of advertising what's going in there. And I'm just wondering, how long is that gonna be up? I'm, I'm, I, I personally find it, not that it's in any way reflective of how I'm gonna vote tonight, but I personally find it very, I think it's ugly. Can I just say that on the record?
Sure, sure. I have to talk to the client about that. We didn't have anything to do with that.
Since so mayor, they have been cited.
Oh, they have? Oh, okay. Well, then that, that's, okay. No, no, no. We're good. We're good. All right, awesome. Okay, I'm good.
I just have one quick one that you sparked. And this again is the future, and I know we're gonna see it, but I'll still be thinking about it. The new alignment, are there any modifications other than the entrance to Griffin Road itself? Because that's a pretty crazy spot on Griffin Road. Everybody's jockeying to get in the right lane, the left lane, and now we're introducing additional, an additional turn lane into Griffin.
No, we're not agree, that turn lane is there. We're not modifying that at all.
Oh, wait. That, that, what do you mean the turn lane is there? There's two lanes that go up to the light.
And then there's the right turn lane to go to Flamingo, isn't there? I mean to, no, I'm sorry, no, I got confused. It was close to go to 185th, 184th, but now it doesn't go through.
Right. I'll withdraw the question. We'll look at pictures and I'll get a better idea. Thank you.
Any other comments before I open up to the public? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay.
I haven't been sworn.
Can you raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Number one, this council's being at the work on faith. You don't see anything, nothing. They're gonna put the entranceway somewhere else and you're gonna vote on that tonight? You don't see anything. Where's the plans? Where's the, the, the boards? There's nothing that you're seeing. You're being asked, believe me, I'm a developer. I'm not going to screw you. Guess what? I don't believe them. Now, let's get down to, they've been cited for this. One, why is the fence where it is? That should be the first question. Because that is in, in front of the berm. It should be behind the berm on their property, not the easement. We can't maintain it, that we're required to maintain it. Number two, we passed an ordinance on commercial sides, saying one four by eight side. You've got almost a hundred yards of signage there. And he says, oh, they've been cited. Well, guess what? They put up another seventy-five feet of signage this week. They had eight panels that weren't up. They're all up now, every, between every fence post, there's now a side, the entire length. Where last week, there wasn't. There were short eight sides. Now they've got it. Oh, they've been cited. How long's this gonna take? If they were a good corporate individual, they would have removed it as soon as it was signed. They would have gone out there and clipped it. I wanna know why the fence was allowed to go where it was. Cause that's not on their property. Except that it's in their easement. People have said, the fence is too close to the road if you're riding a bicycle on that, or if you're walking. It's dangerous. And now we've got all the signs up there. They are not a good corporate actor. Table it till you see all the plans, everything. And this thing about, oh, don't worry about our entrance to Griffin Road. Bull. It is no good. They are not a good actor. Then I, tonight, are table it. Do not pass it.
Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment on this item? Guess not. Okay. All right. Any other council comment? Your mic's off, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, what we're voting on right now has nothing to do with the entrance going in off of Griffin. Am I correct?
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, so all of this, the, the entrance and all, we will look at that later.
Yes.
This here is more, am I gonna say house cleaning? To where the easements get straightened out and put back where they're supposed to be, or where they weren't before and they are now? So this is just cleaning up something that should have been done.
Confirming what had already been approved, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Back to you.
No, Mayor, you're, I mean, you answered it a hundred percent correct.
Okay.
So it's just if you're ready to vote.
Okay, Deborah, please.
Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor John Blonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, you have two speakers tonight under public speakers. Noel Hungsworth is first, and then followed by the Seek Youth Association.
Very good. Yeah, Noel? For public comment?
Speaking about the Tisdor project on 199, 201, and 202 right now. And also probably if somewhat affects 196. If it's not broken, don't fix it. You can tweak it if you want to. That's okay. 199th has, 201, 202, has never flooded the road. Our backyards, that's another thing. We've had our boats in our backyard running full blast. What we have now, and this is by the town administration, has set a standard. It is not a state standard, it is not a county standard, it is not a drainage district standard. It is a town standard of a one-foot ditch, deep ditch, on the sides of the road. Well, 199th and other areas in town all have different road standards because of their different developers and the different times that they were built. 199th has a sloping swale the entire time. Where the water would run down off the road, onto the swale, down to the property lines, and then back to the back of the property. Getting it out of the back of the property, that's another can of worms. But that has nothing to do with the Tisdor. What we have on 199th Avenue right now is directly off the road, a steep slope, down to one foot deep. Approximately two or three feet off the road. At that point, if a horse is walking down the street, or a individual is walking down the street, and they step directly off the road, they could turn their foot, fall, and injure themselves. And the town would be liable because they created it from what is their previous. And they haven't even put the standard, the entire length of all the roads. Cause if they did that, they'd have to replace the driveways. And put drainage either underneath it, or have a one-foot dip in the driveway. So they didn't put plumbing underneath the driveways, which is the drainage pipe and the two trains on either side, as they did on Dyke's Road. And they did not do anything, so the water has nowhere to go. And the rain last night, it rained pretty good by my house. And this morning I got up, and I looked out there, and there's two or three inches of water sitting in the ditch. For the first time, there's water out there in the forty years I've lived there. I'd like to continue for a few more minutes, Mayor. You now cannot park on your front yard when you have guests over, if it's more than a couple of cars to go in your driveway. Because the ditch. You'll get your car stuck, or you'll break your wheels. You can't, the drains on 202 at 50th, I'd like each of you to go out and take a look. They're approximately one foot to eighteen inches off the edge of the curve of the road, both sides. One foot deep. If a car goes off the edge of the road right there, into that hole, it's gonna turn the wheel and either flip the car, or send it careening into the house on the corner. Take your pick. We have got standards that were set up by the administration, and I have no idea why it's lasted this long before someone got before you and said this. It's really, really wrong, and it is not to what this town stands for. I spoke to one of the council members, well, several of you actually, and was told we have to wait till it's finished, and then we'll see what we did wrong, and we'll correct it and go back. Instead of correcting it when there was only maybe a hundred or two hundred yards of it completed. We have to fix the situation. If you wanna see what the drain should look like, there's one that exists on 202, down towards Griffin Road at the first house. That one, you can drive over and it will not turn your car. That is how deep the drain should be. The storm drain. Not eight, a foot deep, or eighteen inches deep, or whatever it is, where it's gonna turn your wheel, jerk it out of your hands as you go across it, if you go through it. I have asked that it be put on the drainage board's agenda. I thought there was a meeting this month, but there wasn't. It'll be on January, from what I'm told. And of the many people that I spoke to, all of them say, this is really screwed up. Why is the town doing this to us? Well, what we're doing is we're putting a square peg in a round hole. It doesn't work. Each individual neighborhood has different standards. And if it's not broke, you don't fix it. If it is broke, you do fix it. And that's what I wanna tell you. It is screwed up. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Seek Youth is the final speaker.
Debbie, why don't you have Debbie welcome up here, just in between, just, uh, you fill out a form later, but, uh...
Thanks. Debbie Green, 199. I agree with everything that Noel just said. And it, it, it was nothing broke on our street. Even that hundred, you know, this hundred-year storm, yes, our backyards were flooded, you could take the canoe, you could, there was no difference between our house on our side of the canal and the people's across the canal. Our street was totally dry. I knew this, that our project was coming. I spoke to several of the council members. I showed you pictures at the same moment in time. The backyard totally flooded, and the front yard, the front, the street, totally dry. So I don't know if it's helpful if then Rod can explain, cause I guess part of, while we're seeing the whole ditch out there, is it part of the process, and they're gonna then come and fill in with some more dirt, and then put the sod, so it's not that
Right.
deep of a ditch? But we just don't know what to expect. So maybe it's helpful to get that information out, so that, and then as far as what Noel said, that hopefully the town is learning from each of these steps that it does, so that you learn from it when you're moving on to the next section. Unfortunately, what's done is done, and hopefully we can do something to alleviate, exactly. Cause right now, it is very dangerous to go running, walking, the horses.
Gotcha. Great, thank you. Yeah, I, just a couple thoughts on that. It's always difficult when a project is halfway done. It's never the way it should be, right? Because that's by nature, it's halfway done. And so I understand it is dangerous there. I'm not, you know, in any way contradicting what you're saying. But it's like a house that's halfway built. There's all kinds of dangers if you were to wander around a house that's halfway built. And that's, that's the nature of the course. What we're doing there is consistent with what we've done throughout the rest of the town as far as the drainage there. The bottom line to this is if you put in a new road, if you're, if you're repaving the road, you've gotta provide the drainage. Even though, even though I understand that the road was dry before, you've, you've got to put in the drainage. If you want that road to last, it's gotta have the proper drainage around it. What I will say is this, and Rod and I have already talked about this, that I think we need to do better before a project starts, communicating out to the residents that are affected, what the different stages are gonna look like, what is gonna happen, the equipment that's gonna be out there, the porta-potties that are gonna be out there. The fact that there's gonna be, you know, the larger ditches until they come back in and refill it and put the, the new sod down, that the, you know, the, the nice grass that they are, have now is gonna go away. And we're putting in the, the Bahia, and, and if they don't want that, you know, we can leave it alone, you know, the, we, we need, we need to do a better job upfront of communicating those things so that it's smoother in the long run. So I think that's the takeaway. But I will say this, that everywhere this project has gone, when it has completed, it has, it's been a fine project at the end of the day. And it's operated properly, it's looked, it's looked good, and it's been functional. So, but we're halfway done, and so it looks like a mess, and I get that. Rod, I don't know if you, if there's anything further you wanna add to that or not? Or correct me if I went astray somewhere. You're always welcome to do that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No, you said, you said it very, very accurately. The only thing I kinda wanted to add for sure is, yeah, they do some rough grading in, in the beginning. It does end up being sometimes a little deeper than normal. I can, I can assure you guys, when it's all said and done, the contractor's gonna come out, they're gonna, they're gonna make sure that they measure it, they're gonna use smart levels for it. I've already had this conversation. So at the end of the day, it's gonna look the way it's supposed to. One thing for sure, though. Noel had mentioned, some of the properties roll off to the back, right? So you, obviously the, the roadways are, are designed for like typically a ten-year storm. So they're gonna be higher than some of the surrounding areas around them. And if you have your backyard, that's, that's a lot lower than the front, than, than, than the road. If you keep your, your, your ditches really shallow, right? Then basically in your backyard, water has to stage up higher and higher and higher to eventually be able to move out, right? He does have a very valid point in that we didn't do the driveways, right? So to have a fully continuous roadway that has that hydraulic essentially equalization point consistent throughout the whole section would make the most sense. We just don't have the ability to do that. But the way that we look at it comprehensively is in the future, all we can do is put the swales in first. As property owners redevelop, get the permits, we make them do it the right way at that point. And also eventually, when we put stormwater infrastructure as part of a CIP or something like that, then we'll actually put the water to actually convey it out of their way. So we, we, we take that type of approach, and I mean, it's with the money that we have and, and, you know, and funding, I think that's really the only way that we can do it.
Great. Thank you, Rod. All right. Thank you all for your patience, Seek Society. Please come up and, we welcome you and, and look forward to your, your presentation.
Good evening. I would like to start off by thanking the town for supporting and helping us raise money for the Military Heroes Clothing and Food Drive. We have been working with the town in previous years to help support our veterans with a helping hand from our local community. It is important to continue supporting our veterans for their service. Once again, this would not be possible without the town's efforts.
I'm also proud to announce that the Seek Youth Association is holding their fourth annual in-person, a race for unity and diversity 5K run slash walk on February 26, 2022. We encourage you to join us and invite your family and friends for a fun-filled day. We ask for a helping hand once again from the town in order to make this, make this a successful race. In previous years, such as 2019, we gathered over seven hundred and fifty attendees and raised $10,000. In 2020, we had over 1,000 attendees and raised $12,000. In 2021, we hosted a virtual race that gathered over 100 attendees and raised over $5,000.
You can register or donate towards the race through our QR code on the flyer, or by going to our website, theseekyouthassociation.org, in which you can also learn about, information about our race. We look forward to working and pulling off another outstanding 5K race with you. On behalf of the Seek Youth Association, we would like to thank the town for helping us, for helping us achieve such events. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. You know, we really thank you all for all that you do. You all put so much time and effort into this, and really draw the community together for such great causes. And you're all just awesome. So thank you. Thank you for coming this evening, and appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Mayor, I think they have a special presentation that they would like to make to the Military Heroes Support Foundation.
Awesome. Very good.
Do you wanna announce what that is, or?
Veterans Day check. So if you guys would like to come down to picture.
Yeah, yeah. Should we come down for a picture? Yeah, let's do it.
When you give a check, you gotta say how much it's for. Nice.
Five hundred.
Very nice.
All right, Bob, set everybody up. Set everybody up.
Mayor, did you invite them to stay for the rest of the agenda?
I'm sure they have better choices.
You're on, you're on number six, Mayor, which is board reports. Mayor, you're on board reports.
Thank you. Do we have any board reports this evening? Seeing none.
Councilmember comments.
Councilmember comments.
I'll go.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thanks. Thank everybody for coming. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Debbie.
George Morris is in back there.
Oh, thanks, George.
First in there, and they're ignoring us.
Hopefully we got this huge, hopefully we got a huge...
Debbie, you're the entire audience right now.
Noel is listening to us.
Okay, Noel's back there too, sorry.
You got four people online, including Andy.
Okay, great. Okay, we, no, I'll be brief. First off, I wanna thank Sunshine Ranch's Homeowners Association and the Rolling Oaks Civic Association for their holiday programs that they put on. It was a lot of fun. It was a very interesting day, and really, we thoroughly enjoyed it. Also wanna say thank you to, and congratulations to Marty, Rich, Vanessa, and Gina for the CAFRA award that they have got here at our last meeting. That's, this is like the tenth straight or something to that effect. It's really outstanding to have a, a team like that, and do a really, really good job. So thank you, Marty, and, and please, your, your, your crew is not here, obviously, but please extend to them our thanks on all that. Just an FYI for a lot, a lot of people, there's gonna be some I-75 roadwork occurring between Sheridan and Griffin. It's gonna be part of the big repaving project, and I believe they're steadily moving south. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be coming up. The Holiday Light Contest was a big success. It was my first year going on it. Had a lot of fun. We had a really chubby Santa Claus going with us. And it was, it was, it was just a really fun night. First, first time impression. It was just really, really a lot of fun. I could see I, you know, I worked too long. I missed, I missed a lot of stuff, so, but I thoroughly enjoyed it. Just wanna let everybody know that in the last newsletter, I published a methodology for level-one fill. We have since had a meeting with Broward County, and we're going over all the points, myself and Keith, and, and Rod, going over all the points. We're going to be republishing a new guide with some of the stuff, I don't wanna say use the word shortcuts, cause that's not the right word, but a little more streamlined that came out of that meeting. Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna, that'll be coming up in, probably by either February, January, February, or March, whenever we put it all together.
Hey, Gary.
Yeah.
What, what kind of progress? You just trying to streamline the process, or eliminate steps?
Well, we can't, it'll totally eliminate stops. With, we, there's a choice A, choice B type of situation. You could, you know, you could buy your way out, you know, if you wanted to do something like that, but I don't, I don't wanna get into, too, too much into the details at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so, but there is, there is stuff that we can, we can do as homeowners and things, and you can carve out parcels and such, you know, mitigation and all that.
I'm all ears. I'm about to file for a permit after the first of the year.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna be working on trying to put all that together, you know, to, to the benefit. I just wanna make mention for, we have the 31st and January 1st coming up in two weeks. And that's the two days that fireworks are legal in the state of Florida. We are putting out our signs on Griffin Road, be mindful. We're also putting out the electronic sign on I-75 to remind everybody that we have a lot of livestock in our area, to be very careful with the fireworks, going, you know, be mindful of all the animals, you know. So I wanna, I just wanna mention that, that that is going on, and will be coming out, you know, before, before the, the holiday, before New Year's. I also wanna mention, duh, 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 where is it? Here we go. Southwest Ranches is really, really lucky. We have a new doctor in town today. Congratulations to Selena Hodges.
Yes.
She, she got her, uh, her doctorate in nursing today. I watched it on YouTube live. It was at one o'clock today, one and change, whatever it was. She looked fantastic. She was, I don't think I've seen that big of a smile out of anybody in quite some time, and we're real lucky to have her. And so I just wanna say, Selena, whenever you see this, cause I'm sure somebody's gonna tell you to look at it. Congratulations, and we're really, really, really proud on you. The last thing I wanna talk about, and this is, this is something, this is food for thought right now. This is just for a discussion item. I just wanna... And I think we need to, nothing we got to do today. I just want to put this out there as food for thought for a future meeting, maybe next month or the month after, if we want to take certain segments and expand the code, proactive portion of the code, just, you know, I'm concerned, I really am, because I, people are looking for me to stop something, and I'm hesitant to do it, you know, just because, you know, you get a knock on the door in the middle of the night. I've had my house egged, I've had paintballs, I've had been, my house has been shot up, you know, they don't know who, who you're, who you're being screened for, you know, on something like that. So, just something to consider. Proactive code, to me, is like a bad word, you know, out here, but I think the state has put us into a, between a rock and a hard place on that. You know, so, I just want to throw that out there, and I'll close with that, Mayor.
Great. Thanks for bringing that up, Gary. I think it's a very important point. All right, who's next?
I'll go.
Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. Our lone attendee in the audience, thank you for coming out. Gary, I likewise echo your concerns about the code, primary, the proactive. I, when I initially heard about the legislation, I had said, you know what, I'll take the, I'll take the brunt, I'll put my name out there, and, you know, you start thinking about the phone calls, and it's like, do I really want to be on this person's list? And that's kind of where, you know, we, we have code, and, you know, we probably need to think about expanding some of the areas to be more proactive. I also had Selena on my list to congratulate, so, Selena, again, all right. An update on the Founder's Trailside Park behind the CVS on Griffin. Cooper City issued a code violation to the CVS, made them clean up their wall, made them prepare the wall, and that interfered, that obstructed with our intent to have Laura Warren do her amazing artwork on the wall. The update on the wall is that the wall has been reprimed, cleaned up, and it's all ready, and the way I learned is that by the end of the year, she is going to be beginning her work on the wall, and I'm really, really excited about what she's going to be doing on that wall, and that's something that was performed through the Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board. Next, listening to, listening to the radio the other day, and Chris Brownlow was also, it is really interesting, she texted me and called me about this issue as I was like, concerned about it, and it's something that I think the town needs to be looking far into the future to accommodate this, and as we were talking, there's a news report that a glacier off of South, actually out of the Antarctic, Antarctica, is about five years from being broken off, and, you know, we think about glaciers breaking off. This glacier is the size of the state of Florida, and they're saying that within 40 years, this ice mass will dissipate into our oceans, and we will see a real ocean rise of two feet. That's going to put almost all of South Florida underwater, unless we're doing something about it, and I think, you know, we need to be looking at the future of what's going to happen to our town with the flooding and the rising oceans. Obviously, the rest of the state is going to be looking at this, but this is something that maybe, you know, looking over things to be doing that the future flooding be taken into consideration. When I was at the Sunshine Ranches event last Sunday, I spoke with Beth and Jimbo Pilgrim, live on Hunter Lane, and they were very concerned about the, their road, Hunter Lane, and I know that the federal government recently enacted an infrastructure plan, and I would like to see that any of these roads that are delayed on the list or later down the list, if we can get some of these federal funds through the infrastructure funds, that we can escalate those, move those to the, move those up on the list, so we can get these roads taken care of. Here we are, we are 21 years into existence, and, you know, Mr. Mayor, your program with the Tisdor was a great, fabulous idea, but now we got some really good funding coming in, and maybe we can escalate those. Oh, yeah, one issue that, I was advised by some equestrians, that the Sterling Road at Volunteer Intersection, there's the northeast corner, FPL had put a telephone pole right in the, right in the middle of the entrance of the guardrails that directly interfered with horses going through there. I spoke with Andy in the town and got FPL to move that. I think it was, wasn't even 10 days, it was less than 10 days. They moved the pole five feet away, so that telephone pole, telephone pole is no longer in the way of obstructing the horses from going through there. I also learned that there was a neighbor out west who got his voter registration card, and, you know, some of those people down there, so we probably are not, not actually working on all cylinders, misfiring, because his voter registration card, now, he lives way out west, and his voter registration card said he lives in Miramar, where he's going to be voting. When they do redistricting, please take a very close look at your voter registration card. Make sure it says Southwest Ranches. Make sure that you have the proper precinct, because if it's wrong, you're not going to be able to change it on voter, on election day. It's better to get that wrapped up really soon. And my last concern has to do with, there's some pending legislation in Tallahassee, and this is like one of the words I say, "Tallad nasty," because this bill, there's two bills, one in the House, one in the Senate, Senate Bill 620, House Bill 569. They're being supported by the Florida Retail Federation, Associated Industries of Florida, and the Florida Chamber of Commerce, which will allow a business to sue, sue a municipality, and I'm going to read the language here. Claims for business damages, except as provided in paragraph B, "A business that has engaged in lawful business in this state for at least three years may claim business damages from a county or a municipality if the county or municipality enacts or amends an ordinance or a charter that will cause a reduction of at least 15% of the business revenue or There's no guidelines that is provided in this, and it's a big concern for towns like us that like to preserve our rural lifestyle. I learned that the city of Weston has passed a resolution to oppose this, and I think it's something that our town should look into, maybe drafting something to likewise, because we, we like our rural lifestyle, and if something like this passes, it can really pose a financial burden on our, on our town. So, that kind of wraps up my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, just to add on to that, David, I think that's a great recommendation to do a resolution opposing that. That is a serious issue that looks like it's on the fast track to being passed, so...
It's already passed one count, one committee in the House.
If I could throw a comment in there as well, I was listening to one of the local NPR radio station, shows, and they were talking about this, and here's where it gets really dicey. If we decided to repave Griffin Road or, you know, Flamingo Road, we're going to, we're going to stop businesses from doing business, you know, that we'll do the best we can, whoever will do, whether us, us or the county, and they can go after the county for damages if they have a loss of revenue, because they're paving the road for a couple of months or a couple of weeks. Scary what this is all about.
Plus attorney's fees.
Yeah, that's right.
And we know those attorney's days.
Yeah, I know.
All right, Jim.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief. I'd like to say that this year has gone by quite quickly, and I would like to take a moment and say thank you to the residents, thank you to the town staff, and my council members, fellow council members. I have learned a tremendous, tremendous amount this year about what it takes to run a town, and I'm very much looking forward to next year. Everybody's been so helpful with questions, answers, and, you know, I'm just proud to sit here. I'm looking forward to next year with the Public Safety and Traffic Committee being started. I think that that'll be something that the residents can put in, and maybe we can do something about the problems with traffic that we have here. And I'd like to close, all right, by saying, "Ho, ho, ho, Merry Christmas," all right? And I'd like to wish everybody a very joyous and happy Christmas, and a very prosperous and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Excellent. And by the way, Jim, I was, I was just so sorry that you couldn't join us at the holiday, you know, event. You missed Santa, he did an amazing job there.
Mr. Mayor, I was called out of town, and I was very sick at the time, so, I had, you know, I had somebody, you know, looking after that, so I do apologize. Thank you.
No worries. Yeah, Bob.
Just real quick, couple of comments. I wanted to follow up on a few of the things that others had said as well, regarding the Astronaut Chili Fest, the Astronaut Parks Foundation Chili Fest and Car Show. It was, I think it was the largest we've had so far. There were the most cars I've seen there, and as far as residents and the people that were selling various things, everybody had a successful day, and it was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
We just got there for the last hour or so, maybe two hours, and made a blast, so they're doing a great job. I hopefully, I don't know how much money they raised.
Over 30,000.
30 grand in one day.
That's awesome.
And folks, that money comes back to the town for supplementing our parks budgets and, and doing things that we need, so it's, it's a wonderful cause, and there, there will be more events through this year. I don't know the dates of the carnival they're putting together, but you'll hear about it. I'm sure Gary will announce it when it's, when it's upcoming. Roca also, Roca every year has a Santa Claus visit for all their residents, and this year, you wouldn't know there was a pandemic, there were just as many families as has ever been, and everybody was respectful of social distancing, it was, it was a very nice thing. I think I photographed 75 families total. Gary, were you collecting the numbers?
No, it was my wife.
Oh, it's my wife, whoop. Oh, that's right. In any case, though, sorry?
I was playing the elf on the shelf.
Oh, that's right. Gary was handing all the children stockings, Santa Claus stockings, as they left, so he was busier than I was. It was a great time, though. I was glad to see so many people show up. Haven't seen any of these people in almost two years. The Sunshine Ranches Holiday Party, I know they invited tons of people, it was a nice time. This is strange for me, this is the first weekend I've been out in public. We haven't gone to parties, we haven't done anything, and all of a sudden, all in one weekend, we're out at multiple events, and the Sunshine Ranches Holiday Party was, was a really good time. It was nice seeing all of the friends that we have over the years that we, we just haven't seen very much. I did want to bring up the Festival of Lights as well. We had our biggest year for that also. We had 10 entrants, and we give out three awards. The three homes that won are all absolutely beautiful, and the winner was actually a first time entrant, so, you know, we need to encourage more people. When you drive around town and you're looking at these lights that the people have, have entered the, the festival, you're driving down the road and you see all these other ones that are just as beautiful. We've got to get the word out better somehow, because there, I know we can have more competition. I also wanted to congratulate Dr. Selena Hodges. If you are on Facebook, there were pictures of her all day today, and she, she's getting the deserve recognition. I remember when she started, what, about three years ago? And, you know, I know a lot of PhD students that are all but dissertation, she made it all the way through, and congratulations to Selena and her family for supporting her through this whole thing. Gary, I wanted to talk about anonymous code too, because you're, you're dead on with, with, you know, I do it too. We have another situation brewing on my street, and the neighbors don't want to see it take a year and a half to get resolved like the one we had last year, and I'm right with you. I mean, I had over $4,000 worth of damage done to my truck around the time that I was reporting the issues going on, on behalf of my neighbors, and again, the phone calls are rolling in because there's somebody doing things that they shouldn't be, and I, I work with Julio. Julio is very effective in getting these things remediated or, or stopped, but everybody knows who to call, and like your eggs and all your other things, I mean, we've had some problems too. Shouldn't go along with the job. So, let's talk about the, the federal money for transportation and infrastructure. I wish we could just apply to the federal government and get it. Doesn't work that way. Federal government passes it to the states. If it's transportation infrastructure funding, it goes to DOT. DOT then divides it up amongst the, the MPOs and the counties throughout the state. Not everybody has an MPO, and then the MPO works with the local governments to distribute the funds. It's more than likely that money will come to us over the next couple of years, but not us. When I say us, I mean Broward County and the MPO. It seems, based on conversations that Andy and I have been having lately with, I don't want to get into it because we're working on it right now, but other municipalities and the MPO, our best bet to get some of that money is through the, the county's penny transportation tax. That's probably our fastest path. We're requesting it on our own for, for Tisdor, but county roads also have their own funds through the same penny sales tax, so the things we've been talking about, we may approach in that direction, but I wish, we saw Debbie Wasserman Schultz over the weekend, and I said, "How? Is there any fast path? Is there any way we can get those funds, you know, not through the state, you know, through your office?" And she's like, "Doesn't work that way, Bob." So, you know, I only know her so well. Some of the other interesting things that they're doing, they, they have these new things they're spreading around through the state, they're called transportation hubs, and I thought, hmm, that'd be great. Well, what they're really designed for is if you have train tracks that are near highways, think I-95 and the new bright line tracks, or you're down in Miami and you've got Tri-Rail or People Mover or Metro Mover, these things are designed to make intermodal changes very quick. If you take a bus to a certain location, these transportation hubs are ways for you to get from one form of transportation to the other very quickly, so I don't think we really want to push for anything like that, because they may require a park and ride or something along those lines, but it's interesting, there, there are all kinds of new creative ideas coming out every month through the MPO on how we can improve transportation. It's not just about paving roads either. They're looking at a lot of other things these days to improve overall transportation. Just a final thing, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and we'll see you all next year. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Bob.
Awesome. Great. Thank you, Bob. A lot of good stuff covered. I won't go into detail, but I will just say that, yeah, we've had some wonderful events here between the Car Show Philly, the Chili Fest, and the Sunshine Ranches event, and...
They're called transportation hubs. And I thought, hmm, that'd be great. Well, what they're really designed for is if you have train tracks that are near highways, think I-95 and the new Brightline tracks, or you're down in Miami and you've got Tri-Rail or People Mover or Metro Mover, these things are designed to make intermodal changes very quick. If you take a bus to a certain location, these transportation hubs are ways for you to get from one form of transportation to the other very quickly. So I don't think we really want to push for anything like that, because they may require a park-and-ride or something along those lines. But it's interesting. There are all kinds of new creative ideas coming out every month through the MPO on how we can improve transportation. It's not just about paving roads either. They're looking at a lot of other things these days to improve overall transportation. Just a final thing. Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and we'll see you all next year. Thank you, folks.
Awesome. Great. Thank you, Bob. A lot of good stuff covered. I won't go into detail, but I will just say that, yeah, we've had some wonderful events here between the Car Show Philly, the Chili Fest, and the Sunshine Ranches event, and each one of those. And it's just awesome to me to see the town be able to gather together again, you know, it's been a while, and to see all the folks out there again, and it's really been wonderful. Let me add my congratulations, Selena. We certainly, you know, it's wonderful to hear. I know my wife went through a similar journey recently. It's a lot of work, so congratulations on that. That's fantastic. Also, we just got our recertification for the National Wildlife, right? All right, so that is awesome. So it's always good. Yep, awesome. So it's important. It's part of who we are and what we stand for. So fantastic on that. Congratulations, December, to you and to all, really, the residents that participate in that. So, thank you. I also wanted to thank, we had an event in Broward County. You know, I'm still stuck to a desk most of the time during the day, but Jim and Gary were able to represent us down there at that event. So thank you both for taking the time to run down there. Appreciate that. And then lastly, well, not lastly, I do want to wish everybody a wonderful Christmas, Happy New Year, just the holidays, however you celebrate them. But then lastly, you know, I have to tell a story, my last item here. I remember, I remember standing there with Bob and Gary and a bunch of other folks trying to figure out the financials of this town back in around 2002.
With Jeff Nelson.
Yeah. Noel certainly was there with us. Jeff was there. A lot of folks were there trying to figure those statements out. There's a bunch of spreadsheets. Yeah, yeah, did this number, where did this number come from? Well, it's on another spreadsheet, but we couldn't find it on the other spreadsheet. The spreadsheets didn't match up. The balancing wasn't there. The, it was a mess. It was a mess. I mean, it was a serious mess, because there was no financial accountability. Frankly, there was, I won't go into details, but there was the dream team. Money was being funneled out of this town faster than you can imagine, and it was a serious problem. And it was because we had no financial controls in the town. We went through several financial administrators, and I think each one kind of moved us closer to the goal, but.
Didn't our auditors fire us at one point?
I'm getting there.
So bad?
I'm getting there. I'm getting there, but yeah, yeah. And they got us closer and closer, but it kind of culminated with that event there where frankly, we had a set of auditors, and they were getting such poor response, getting so delayed in the information back to them that they basically said, you know, we're done. We're leaving. You can find somebody else to finish this audit, because we've got other work to do with actually entities that will cooperate with us and work with us. And then we brought somebody else on the scene. And Martin Sherwood arrived here. As we know, Marty arrived here about the same time Andy did. And they've proven to be a great team, but I want to particularly recognize Marty this evening, because Marty has announced a very well-deserved retirement. He will be working with us technically through March, the end of March, but I'm already twisting his arm to put in some additional hours past that as we do the transition. But Marty, you and your staff that you have built and that you have trained and that you have selected all quality, quality people, but what you have pulled together there in the time that you have been here has transformed the financials of this town. There's no way to overstate what you have accomplished in your years here. It has taken us from something that was a serious, serious concern and liability for this town and transformed it into one of the strongest elements and pillars of our town. Our reserves have never been better. Each year, we have excess. The budget process, I've never seen it operate so smoothly, and yet also have the details available for residents and the council to go into. Everything ties out. Isn't that a radical idea, that things actually tie out? But Marty, you know, we'll talk about this for the next few months. You're not going away tomorrow. But I just, I just am so, this town is so indebted to what you have done, and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to express that, because you have done an incredible job. You are an incredible person. You make that eagle fly across the PowerPoint like nobody else can. And just exceptional job, Marty. We are indebted to all that you have done, and you have earned an amazing retirement. I hope it lasts many, many, many years, and I hope that you get to enjoy it, and I hope we get to pull you in here every once in a while for your expertise. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That was warm, cherished comments. Like I've assured you all, I will ensure a smooth transition. If there's any need, I want to thank you all for the opportunity you've provided, myself and my family, that all these years, this has been a wonderful experience, working for the residents, working for the staff. You have an excellent staff. As the mayor has indicated, this town could not be any stronger. I hope it continues its growth and strength. We've come a long ways, and I'll be there. I'm not going anywhere. I'll still be in Broward County. I would like opportunity to spend time with family in retirement, and I just want to ensure you, this is not the great resignation. This is the great retirement. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Marty. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to you, Keith.
Sure, Mayor. And Marty, congratulations. And I read the resignation letter, and I know they're voting on your bonus next meeting. So I just want to make sure I'm correct. It said, "March or until a replacement can be found." That's correct, right? Mayor, happy holidays to all. I echo you, your sentiments, and congratulations to the doctorate and for council members, Albretton, or as the mayor likes to call him, Albritton. And to Vice Mayor, thank you all so much for attending the Broward County Commission meeting, special meeting on Tuesday. Just so the public knows, two longtime commissioners, Dr. Barbara Sharif, who used to be our commissioner until redistricting, she's now served 11 years on the county commission, and Dale Holness have both resigned to run when they ran for Congress, and their new replacements, Tori Alston and Jared Moskowitz, will be replacing them for the remainder of their terms. So the Broward County Commission had a farewell meeting for these two county commissioners, and I am pleased that the town was well-recognized and well-respected by the county commissioners, and they were all truly thrilled that we were there, including our direct commissioner, Senator Geller, as well as, I think, every one of them came up to you all to say hello and to ask what the town needed. And we've had a huge list, so. So thank you. Finally, and I could go on, but finally, you know you have a real issue when you're sitting at dinner in Longboat Key watching this meeting. So I'd like to tell Andy to enjoy his vacation a little bit, you know?
Hi, Andy.
But thank you, Mayor. That's it for legal.
Right. Thank you. Russell, administrative comments?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to just announce that Davie Fire Administration will be conducting their CERT, their Community Emergency Response Team classes in February, beginning on Tuesday, February 8th. It's an eight-week course, and so any interested, Davie, sorry, South West Ranches residents, employees, or any members of the council that would be interested in joining the CERT team, certainly that invitation is available to you, so I just wanted to announce that.
You know, let me jump in there. I've done that CERT program before. It is time well spent. You will learn a lot of great skills, and also, you know, be able to interact with the fire and rescue folks over there and get a real appreciation of what they do. And in the event of a serious, sort of a disaster or some kind of an issue here, it gives you the skills to really be able to help out in a meaningful way. So I would encourage folks to consider that. Thanks for bringing that up.
Mr. Mayor, can you touch on that a little bit? I'm intrigued.
Yeah, yeah. So what CERT does is it basically, it's a training program where they teach you skills and how to deal with rescue from like a fire if there is some sort of a natural disaster where, like a hurricane that knocks down buildings. Not that you go in there and do all those things, but you do go through there attempting to find those locations where there might be survivors so that you can then direct the proper individuals in there that are fully trained, the fire and paramedics, to go to the right places. But we can do a lot of the preliminary stuff so that the professionals, their time is spent where it needs to be spent and not spent just kind of looking for areas to work. But you learn CPR, you learn a lot of practical skills that can help you really in a lot of situations, even outside of those disasters. It's like a 10 to 14-week commitment once a week. And it's amazing. It's really, it's well worthwhile. I had the, you know, the fortunate ability to go through that with CERT. And then also Davie Police has the CPA, Citizens.
Police Academy.
Police Academy, that is also very, yeah, not the movie Police Academy, okay? No, it's awesome, you know, like at the event we just saw, the K-9 unit. Well, they have a whole night on the K-9 unit, and they go into a lot more events, a lot more training issues than what we saw there at the recent town event. But I'm getting off course, but a great event. Thank you for bringing up CERT.
Citizens Emergency Response Team?
Yes, exactly.
And Russell, when did you say that starts?
It starts Tuesday, February 8th, and it is an eight-week course.
Eight weeks, okay.
Eight weeks, yep. If anyone from the town council wishes to participate, then just please let me know, and I will go ahead and make sure you're registered properly. The second item I have, Mayor, is unfortunately I need an emergency PO to be issued. We need to purchase some cinder blocks. We're going to be closing in Marty's office so that he can't leave. Appreciate that.
Motion to approve.
Wouldn't take that much.
In all seriousness, I did want to publicly recognize Marty and congratulate him on a very well-deserved and well-earned retirement. So certainly will be missed. You're leaving giant shoes to fill, as you know, and we certainly are going to do everything we can to keep you around as long as we can, so. Thank you for that. The last thing, Mayor, I just wanted to just wish everybody a happy holiday season. I also wanted to congratulate the town council for working so cohesively together this year and allowing staff to do their best work. And I think town staff and council worked very well together this year to do a fantastic job for the town, so.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Russell, you just reminded me on something. Because of COVID, I think that this is the only council that didn't do your inauguration photo together in 2020. So please schedule a time to do that, because you're now collectively the only council that doesn't have their picture on the wall.
We think we arranged that, no problem.
Just a reminder.
All right. Very good. Item number 10.
10 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest trenches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2022 through 2026 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This was approved on first reading in November 18, 2021. This is second and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. David got it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I would like to thank Marty, because when he came here, Conference C Plan sort of like put his feet to the fire on this item, because it wasn't being passed till like just before the budget came in again in October of the next year, if it came in at all. And we sort of jumped on him and said, where is it? Where is it? Where is it? Till finally, he got into the idea that October 1st, the budget came into, and it would be presented to the Conference C Plan Advisory Board in October. Strange as it was the first time, and it has become redundant now. And I'd like that to be one of the considerations when Marty is interviewing and helping to find our new replacement for him. That, and also maintaining the momentum that we have for the award that we get every year for the extremely fine quality of our balanced budget and the transparency. Those, I think, are two primary reasons to hire someone, that they will say, we are going to do the five-year plan every year and get it to the Conference C Plan in October, and also that we're going to get the award every year. Because if you get the award, you've done it right.
Right.
Thank you.
Good. Seeing no other public comment, Deborah, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Brinkus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, if I may just go at a turn for one minute. Russell reminded me on something that's not on the agenda, but apparently because of the way the meeting's set, he just wanted me to bring it up, and George reminded me as well. He texted me. As you all are aware, the Astronite Parks Foundation desires to rent for free a park within the town to hold a townwide carnival right after, what's the date on that, Russell? January 14th through?
Martin Luther King Weekend.
Martin Luther King Weekend, 20-something. 14 through 17, that was right the first time. 14 through 17, with a couple of days before for setup, a couple of days thereafter for breakdown. I prepared a lease agreement, which I sent to Russell to protect the town's interests in that. Normally, we would bring that before you for approval, but because of the late meeting in January, the event will actually take place before that meeting. So I guess this is one of the times you say, speak now or forever hold your peace. You know, we just want to make sure that the town council consents to this event occurring or if there's any issues, and sorry, it's not on the agenda, so I just want to bring it up before we forgot.
Yeah, I certainly support that event. Is there any concerns with moving forward with that?
Do I need, we need to move to approve it?
If we could have just a motion for documentation of the record, and all we would do is a motion to approve a lease agreement with the Astronite Parks Foundation for the carnival event.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. I understand there was a list of concerns and, I guess, requirements, I'm not sure what, that they needed to meet. Have those all been met, George? Everything's all right with that? All the concerns, I know from the Parks and Recreation Board, whatever. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, George Morris. Yes, there was a list that was developed by Keith that was over a bunch of different meetings that we had, points that he wanted for us to meet and answer. And that list was all typed up, and the answers were put in writing and. And that list was all typed up, and the answers were put in writing and forwarded to Russell, to Andy, and to Keith. I think they answered all the questions that they had, and legal was in the process of reviewing that, so I haven't heard that they've had any other additional questions. I think we sufficed all of the questions and concerns.
Thank you, George.
Yes.
And just to follow up on that, we finalized the lease agreement, which I sent to Russell and Andy, and I sent a copy to George as well, but they're reviewing, so we will finalize it and get it signed.
Good. All right.
All right.
Do we vote? I'm sorry.
Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, Deborah, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, I have to read this into the record. I know that this one was tabled from the LPA, but will have to be duly tabled by this council as well. An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, entitled "Definition of Terms," to revise the definition of the term net acre to exclude certain power line transmission easements, amending Article 45, entitled "Agricultural and Rural Districts," Section 045070, minimum plot size and dimensions to provide for lots made non-conforming by this ordinance, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And as I mentioned previously, this was tabled by the local planning agency of the town until March 24, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
I'd like to say something first before anybody jumps through. You know, after watching all of us, you know, as these items are progressing through the procedures, I'm just wondering if we should like table this forever.
I, I.
This portion.
I would support that.
The reason, I'm thinking of the hundreds of people that we would have to notify, you know.
And I think I know how they would feel.
Yeah, I think there would be, I think we're really asking for.
Trouble.
Trouble. Yeah, that we don't need.
Sparks and tiki parties.
I would like to see this table forever. I'm one of the people affected by it, so.
Yeah, I know.
You know, but I would like to see it tabled.
And I'd like to get that on the record again, Gary, that I really, I admire you for putting this forward because it is a reduction in property rights, but it affects you. It would reduce your rights, and yet you are willing to go with it anyway.
Yeah.
So thank you for, thank you for doing that. But I think, overall, I think that the loss of property rights is bigger than the plus on this side, so I would.
Yeah, and it's probably bigger than we think it is.
I think so, too.
You know, I would like to see this, you know, at this point, with this council going away.
So from a legal perspective, I'd rather it denied, and then if you ever want to bring it back, there's nothing that would prohibit you to do so.
We vote on it and just vote it down.
Vote it down, and that would also be voting down the recommendation for the LPA to send notice to all impacted residents.
Good. All right. Any further discussion on this item? Any public discussion on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. And I'll say this only once, so you don't have to hear me again on the next item. This is in reaction to what took place at Cessna.
Right, right.
Since you're not going to do this, how are you going to stop that from happening in the future? It behooves this council to come up with a solution now. What is your alternative? You've already knocked down, because you don't have five votes, on agricultural reserve areas. You've now got rid of the transmission lines, and you're getting rid of the water management areas. So you can now use those for your acreage, and you can have those little tiny plots which you can't have horses or any animals on, such as the five or six lots in Cessna. What is your replacement? How are you going to replace those in our rural lifestyle? What are you going to do? And do we have to say this every meeting from now until you do? Are you going to figure out how to protect those that are coming into the new homes that might want an animal, and they can't? And that is not our town. This is a reaction to that, and you are now letting it go and saying, okay, the Cessna people, developers, they can do that. They can do anything they want. So what are you going to do? Thank you.
Let me respond to that, if I can, if it's all right. I would say, first of all, we're not throwing all those things out that you listed, okay? We are eliminating this one. We've discussed it, and we've determined that the con is more onerous than the pro that we're getting there. The water, we're delaying, but we certainly did not set that aside. There was the flagpole lots that were used in there. We're still doing that. The vast majority of the items that came out of that that we're working on are all in progress. It's just the one that we're setting aside. So I think that needs to be made clear. And even with the agricultural areas, although we're not talking about that tonight, that did not go away. That's still under consideration, and we're just looking, you know, for the right way to do that. And I think that's, and I think that's the right way to do it. You know, a lot of times, the first impression that we have is not necessarily the best alternative for coming up with something that's going to stand the test of time. And so these are still things that, the vast majority of them are moving forward, and I think it would not allow, frankly, to happen on the Cessna property that did happen. And so we're moving in that direction, but this one that we're getting rid of, you know, is, I think we're doing the right thing.
I was actually going to ask the question that Noel just asked. I'm not convinced that we have to have this piece to achieve our goal.
Right.
But do we have enough otherwise to achieve our goal? Every one of these developers seem to be teaching us a new lesson.
Yeah.
You know, when Toll Brothers came through, we realized we need to protect the land use that's out there now, so they don't turn around and try to make it all one zoning. These guys came along and showed us how much you can put on one lot.
Yeah.
Okay, they did a good job of it. Akai is showing us some other things. It's interesting. But are we comfortable or confident that with the other items that we either partially discussed tonight or we've deferred, that we can achieve the same goal, or do we need to keep working on this?
Well, I do think we need to keep working on it, and Councilmember Albretton has brought up some great, you know, concerns about the, you know, setting aside the area for animals, and I think they're valid concerns. But I think we need to keep working on that. That needs to be done, in my estimation. That needs to be done. That can't be set aside and forgotten. That is, and to me, that's the heart of what is going to stop what happened in Cessna from happening again. Yeah, we're fixing some other things, like the flagpole lots and things like that, that they utilized there. I never thought they would, but like you say, we learned, we learned.
Yeah, shared driveways and.
Yeah, you know, it's crazy. But at the end of the day, to me, if we can reserve, if we can find that right balance where we're reserving space for the animals, then we've solved the problem.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask you a question, if I could. Do we have any idea how many more pieces of property the size of Cessna that the power line affects, just like they did for Cessna, versus the number of people that have the five acres with the power lines across them all over town? You know, there's probably a lot more of those five-acre properties that would like to subdivide or like to be able to split the properties than any 10 or 20 or 30-acre property where a developer would come in under those power lines. So I agree with Noel that it developed from Cessna, and there are four or five lots in there where those people will never be able to have a barn, and I do feel sorry for them, but I am realistic also. I'm not real sure that you'll ever see a barn in that area. You may, but I'm not sure you would. So the idea of punishing 200 people with five-acre properties as opposing to try and stop somebody that's developing 10 or 20 acres, you know, we can come up with other ways of doing that.
Right.
So are we all on the kind of same page here on this item, the power line transmission? I mean, we're jumping around a little bit.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, we're on the same page on the power line.
I would love for somebody other than me to make a motion for denying.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to deny the, this item.
I'm going to second it, but I really need to express some concerns here. You know, we look at our logo, Southwest Ranches, Florida, and the biggest animal on there is a horse. We've seen plantation overdevelop to the point that they really don't have horses there. I don't want that to happen to our town. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that, hey, everybody has to have a horse in their land. They don't have to have a barn in their land. But damn it, you gotta, you gotta keep what we have here because this is all that's left. And we gotta fight for, you know, if a future landowner wants to have a horse on their land, my position is, we gotta, we gotta fight for that.
Preserve it.
We gotta preserve it. And that's what I ran on, keeping it rural, and, you know, the horses is part of it. Horses are part of it. So I'll second the motion.
Yeah, no, I think that's very well expressed, and I think that's why we need to go back and make sure that we get that one ordinance that ensures that the space is there for those animals.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me make a, let me make a comment similar to David. I have a good friend who actually ran the same time I did up in Loxahatchee Groves. Loxahatchee Groves looks a lot like South, used to look a lot like Southwest Ranches. Everybody has horses. I mean, Karen's got probably 300 chickens. She's got ostriches, all kinds of crazy stuff, but that's what she chooses to do. Well, she ran and she lost against basically all pro-development people. So I was up there, I was up on 80 two weeks ago, last week it was, and as I'm going down, that's, I think, Southern Boulevard or Okeechobee Boulevard, as I'm going down, all the places in front of her property that used to be wide open, not anymore. There's a tractor supplier, there's a this, there's a that, there's a Walmart, there's a Publix. There's no frontage on the highway anymore. Well, over the weekend, I was looking at the maps of that area on Google Earth. Anybody familiar with the acreage? It's kind of supposed to be like us, all right? Big lots, the whole thing. Everything has been subdivided or sold to developers, where they're putting in two, 300 homes.
Right.
It's shocking.
Yeah.
This is an area that's supposed to be dedicated to agriculture according to Palm Beach ordinances. Not anymore. Everybody looks the other way, and it's, there's no, there's no open space unless you go 30 miles north or west towards the Everglades. So that's why I ran. That's why I've been involved since day one here. I want to keep this the way it is.
Right.
So you can see how fast it goes the other way.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other comments? I think we're, we're good. All right. Deborah, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Once again, an affirmative, an affirmative vote here is to deny this. It's to vote, a vote for yes means no. A vote of yes means no.
One of those.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
I think so. All right.
Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion to deny, passed.
Thank you.
Item 12 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, entitled "Definition of Terms," to revise the definition of the term net acre to exclude certain surface water management areas and drainage easements, amending Article 45, entitled "Agricultural and Rural Districts," Section 05-070, minimum plot size and dimensions to provide for lots made non-conforming by this ordinance, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, this item comes to you with a recommendation from the LPA to table indefinitely, but to send the item back to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board for further review.
Perfect. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we send this back to the board.
Second.
Indefinite.
Very good.
Period.
All right. Motion to table. Deborah.
Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The item was for tabling, Noel, so there's no public comment.
Yeah, there's no public comment.
Item 13 was, item 13 was withdrawn by the town administration, so we're on to item 14. An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, entitled "Definitions," Section 010-30, terms defined to amend the meaning of the term "flag plot," amending Article 15, general provisions, Section 015-110, "flag plots," to revise this as standards for flag plots and providing for lots made non-conforming by this ordinance, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, this comes to the council with a recommendation of approval from the town's local planning agency. We would like to incorporate by reference Jeff Cadham's entire presentation, including his lackluster diagram of a flag lot.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Is there any comment from the council on this item?
I thought you'd drop pretty well.
Sorry, Jeff.
Any public comment?
I didn't go to art school.
Yeah. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Deborah.
Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
All right. We are on item 15. 15. An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 115, plating and subdivision of land, Division 1, plating, Section 115-010, applicability in Division 2, waiver of plat, Section 115-070, purpose to restrict the use of the waiver of plat process for subdivision and make changes of a housekeeping nature, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, this item comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the town's local planning agency with one caveat amendment that you should be considering, which is a additional waiver of plat requirement, waiver of plat can be obtained for any resident who has lived continuously on their property for 20 years, provided that they agree by themselves to not resell the property for five years after the waiver of plat is obtained. I heard Noel in my side ear, so I'm going to just answer his question before I have to hear it in a minute, and that is, this was part of a zoning in progress. The zoning in progress continues until the ordinance is approved on second reading, which will be at your January agenda, so the timing fits perfectly. I think that's what you were asking. I don't think there is a, there is a zoning in progress. It continues to go unless the council chooses otherwise to waive it. Sorry, Mayor. So it's before you for consideration with those changes.
Great.
Make a motion to approve with the changes?
Second.
I just want to clarify, was that motion also to include that they couldn't further subdivide it, that they would need to restrict it to not be able to further subdivide it?
That's in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Any comments from the council on this one? Any public comment on this one? Seeing none. Deborah.
Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item 16, an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 140, entitled Variances, Section 140-020, authority to expand the town council's authority to grant variances, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This item comes before you with a recommendation of approval from the LPA. Uh, I'd like to present it to the council with Jeff Katem's full presentation on why this, uh, item is being brought forward.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comment, questions on this one from the council? Seeing none. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Deborah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
A resolution, item 17, a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving a grant agreement in the amount of $46,377.50 with the State of Florida Division of State of Fire Marshal, Florida Firefighter Systems Program Grant, wow, they made that long, to purchase five self-contained breathing apparatus, approving a purchase order in the amount of $46,000 and zero cents with the Municipal Emergencies Services to purchase the equipment, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2022 adopted town budget and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment, questions on this item? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Public comment closed. Deborah, please.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, the next items on the agenda are all the boards, thank you, are then the boards, uh, nominations, uh, for the 2022 calendar year. We'll start with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing the town, town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have the list of, do we need to read off the names?
You have to announce your designees, um, for the record.
Okay. Um, my designee is Noel Hollingsworth.
My designee is Lori Parrish.
My designee is George Morris.
Mine is Jason Hallberg.
Mine would be Joseph, uh, Alter, Alter, Alter.
Great, thank you. And then, uh, we had two at-large members as well in the prior year, I believe. Uh, I certainly support, um, both of those being retained on the board.
I, uh, I support both of them.
Yeah, Ms. Anna Cole and Robert Sirota?
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Approved.
Okay, so those are the members.
Is there a motion in a second?
Yeah, it's already been.
It was done?
Sorry, I missed it.
Because it was a note. Okay.
I think so.
All right, and?
I think, but Robert was saying at the last meeting, he was resigning.
Not from this board. Different board.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yep. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Deborah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, restating the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective date. Before you make a motion to approve, let's announce the members, then we approve.
Right, right. Okay. Um, I retain Jim, uh, James Starkweather.
I have approved, uh, Yordale Fuentes.
And I'll continue to appoint Kirk Hobson Garcia.
I'll continue to, uh, appoint Ed Gonzalez.
Yes, sir. And I'd like to keep Lee Lester.
Very good. Um, and then we had two at-large members, uh, Brian Hotelling and George Morris. I support keeping those on there.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I support.
Yes.
Okay, so those are the members.
And we, I guess we have to support Vince.
What's that?
I don't think that changes.
Yeah, honorary, do we, well, we mentioned.
Vince Faletta.
Honorary, yeah, Vince Faletta's honorary member.
Lifetime member.
Lifetime member.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Next is the Fire Advisory Board, a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Fire Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing for an effective date.
Very good. Um, I, uh, will continue to support having Vince Lombardi as my appointee.
My, my appointee is Jeff Casner.
Mine is, uh, Mike Viszakely.
Mine is Tina Spiers.
Mr. Mayor, mine would be Jeff Strickland.
Great, thank you. And then we have two at-large members on here, Matthew Amundson and, uh, Gary Harrington. And I support having those remain on there.
Yep.
Likewise.
And Mr. Mayor, this, this committee, I'm aware, uh, has a lot of real important business going on in the next year.
They do. They've got some work to do. Yep. Awesome. Those are the members. Is there any further comment? Any public comment on these?
No, no.
Motion to approve.
Seeing none. Oh, yeah, let's do that.
Second.
Let's do that. Good idea.
Minor, minor, too.
All right, awesome. Deborah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Recreation, Forestry, and Natural Resources Advisory Board, ratifying the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Keith, you might want to change your language. It's supposed to start off with Parks.
Parks.
Right, David?
Yes, I made that motion in the last year.
Yep. It's a Scrivenis era, our march change. Should be Parks.
Yeah. Okay.
There you go.
Uh, just, Russell, just historically, this is a horrible name. Historically, this name was required in order for Emily to apply for grants from the state of Florida.
Yeah.
Was that already discussed and that name's not needed anymore?
So we kept the name the same, but we just added Parks in front of it.
Right.
Okay.
Parks.
Parks.
Here, pick.
Awesome. All right, so my, uh, uh, my appointee is Christine Brownlaw.
My appointee is Debbie Goffrose.
Mine is Debbie Green.
Mine is Deana Butler.
Mine is Catalina Stube.
Very good. And then we have, uh, three at-large members, Wendy Holberg, Sharon Melson, and Lori Morris. We also have two honorary members, Astrid Knight and Mary Gay Chapels. Certainly support all those being retained.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Agree.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, is there any comment from the council on those? Any public comment on those? Seeing none. Deborah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
I'll say yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
I'll say yes, anyway.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
I corrected it on my paper already. I just.
It's okay, I missed the Parks. A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Very good. Um, my appointee is Barbara Gonzalez.
My appointee is Rose Albritton.
And I want to announce that Judy Parker is retiring, and her replacement will be Lori Morris.
Very good.
My appointee, uh, is Wendy Hallberg.
Uh, I have a vacancy. I'd like to move Sage Sumeta from the at-large up to the appointment, if you would.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so then our at-large members are none, right?
None.
None. None.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There we go.
Very good. Any further comment on this? Any public comment on this? Seeing none. Deborah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the School and Education Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Very good. Um, my appointee to this board is Paige Geyason.
My appointee is Jennifer Montgomery.
My appointment is Debbie Green.
My appointment is Kathy Sullivan.
My appointment, Chris Brownlow.
Very good. And then we have, uh, three members that were on there before at-large, uh, Francesca Case, Leah McDonald, and Priscilla Prado Strohs. Um, and I believe that we have an additional member for Selena.
Selena, Selena has volunteered for this board now that she's done playing student.
Yeah.
So as an at-large?
As an at-large, yeah. We all good with that?
So moved, yeah.
Wait, Mayor, for one second. Are you sure?
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, Selena.
All right, was there a motion in a second?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, is there any other comment on this? Any public comment on this? Deborah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Move, post.
Mayor, I'm now excited to present council, Albritton's newest board to the town of Southwest Ranches, a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, creating the Public Safety and Traffic Committee for the purpose of advising the town council of public safety and traffic-related issues, providing for the board's goals, objectives, and limitations, providing for the appointment of board members, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you.
Great job, Jim. So my, my appointment to this board is Walt Butler.
My appointment is Diana DeHay.
Mine is Luis Rodriguez.
My appointment is Ed Gonzalez.
And mine would be Roland Gendel.
Very good. Any further comment on this? Any public comment on this? Yeah, Noel.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. There was a discussion at one point that this would be a temporary board with a term limit, and that is not anywhere identified as what the term is.
Yeah.
And so could we have the, uh, sunset date, please?
Every board in the town, Noel, is one year.
No, it was not supposed to be even a year, from what I understand. Is it supposed to be a year now?
No.
Hold on. So I, I hear you, I hear your question. So, yeah, Russell.
I just, yeah, if I could just point out that in Section Four of the resolution, the last line, it does say the initial board member shall serve from January 2022 through June 2022. So the term is specified.
Six months, Mayor.
Is that what you want?
Yes, sir. It was a six-month board. That's what was agreed upon.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Very good. And Jim, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you for your work on this, for pulling this together. I think this is going to be, uh, you know, as, as you have stated on many occasions, just repeating your, your points, which are excellent, um, that traffic is one of the biggest issues in our town. And I think this is a real concrete step towards, uh, trying to make an improvement there. So thank you for your work on it.
And I'm happy to hear the, uh, the choices from the council. I think we have a broad all the way across town. So I think it'll be well represented. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right, Deborah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
You betcha.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Absolutely.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Final item before the, uh, discussion item, a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, expressing its support of the Broward County Audit of the Animal Care and Adoption Division, Report Number 21-05 December, dated December 16, 2020, providing for its support of the implementation of guidelines and best, uh, practices by the Animal Care and Adoption Division with the goal of providing better care for the dogs and cats maintained at the shelters, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Mayor, um, you brought us this item, but I did some research, so I'll speak about it real briefly. Uh, the county's auditors, uh, issued a scathing report to Broward County about the condition of its animal shelters and its care and treatment of the animals in the animal shelters. Um, uh, after that report was issued, an inspection was done, and it was determined that none of the recommendations in the report, almost none, I should say, um, had been complied with. Uh, so numerous municipalities have adopted resolutions, uh, to send to Broward County, asking them to implement, implement the auditor's recommendations. And, uh, the mayor brought this to our attention, so we thank you and put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Keith. Yeah, this, this did come to my attention, and, um, it's, it's, you know, it's part of what we're all about here. And, um, and so, you know, anything that we can do to apply a little bit more pressure to get this put in place, get the animals treated the way they should be, um, so I appreciate your support on this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I do have a question about thi-
I do, too.
I do have a question about this. Um, why are they not following the auditor recommendations? That's bizarre.
It is bizarre. It is bizarre.
So we don't know?
I don't, I don't.
Maybe, Keith, you said you did some research on this?
Yes.
Why are they not following the auditor's requirements or recommendations?
I didn't get that deep. Uh, but, but they have not. And, and that's why, you know, uh, there's staunch, Hollywood adopted this, Hallandale adopted this.
Good.
And it's, you know, starting to go through all the municipalities.
I got a, a, a question. Is there a way we can have the administrator appear for us?
We can ask.
Because, I, I mean, my taxpayer, my, my tax dollars are going to fund that place.
That's right.
And, um, you know, I really believe the taxpayers of our town, really, um, this is what, we preserve our animals, we protect our animals in this town. And I think that somebody needs to come here and answer some questions for us. Just my two point, two cents, whatever.
Right. All right. Any, uh, public comment on this item? Seeing none. Deborah.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.